Welcome to this meeting of the Board of Selectmen on December 2nd. And I want to start off, we, on a sad note unfortunately. We were all shocked and saddened to hear of the death of Shushu Merrill over the weekend. She was the wife of one of our longtime colleagues on the Board of Selectmen. And she also, in her own right, was a town meeting member for many years and stalwart on the Flag Day Committee. And I think, Mr. Kleckner, you saw her just recently at the dedication for the Tom Hennessy
On Friday.
Playing Field on Friday. And so it was a shock to everybody. And Selectman DeWitt, I think you have some information about them.
I do, but I'm sort of embarrassed to say, in my rush to gather all my bits together, I left my, like, my poop sheet behind. But what I know is that there will be a visiting at the Bello Day Funeral Home, thank you, at 376 Washington Street, which is across the street from here tomorrow, from 4 until 8:00 p.m. The funeral, in fact, will be private, and on Thursday afternoon at 1 o'clock, there'll be a memorial service at Pine Manor College, 400 Heath Street, in the Founder's Room. So the visiting hours at Bello Day are on Wednesday from 4 until 8:00, and the memorial service will be on Thursday, 1:00 p.m., in the Founder's Room at Pine Manor College. And those of us who knew Shushu are shocked and saddened by her loss. Her family, I'm sure, is in great mourning, and I think our hearts go out to all of them.
Okay, thank you. Any other announcements?
Well, there are a bunch of things going on. Tomorrow night, there's a, oh, actually tomorrow afternoon, we have an override, sort of, forum at the Senior Center at 3:00 p.m. There'll be a kind of overview of the possible proposition, two and a half override, with some members of the Override Study Committee making a short presentation.
And I am also on the panel representing us.
And actually, Selectman Daley will be there, yes.
But other selectmen are welcome to come.
And other might, other selectmen might be there, too.
I will try to be there.
Okay, very good.
And then in the evening, there's an event which actually, Selectman, Waschinsky can explain.
Right. Tomorrow evening at 7:00 p.m. in this room, we're going to be having a public meeting regarding Gateway East. We're looking at the design of Gateway East, which is, Washington Street meets Route 9 meets Boil, Brookline Avenue, gosh.
Right, right.
It's a very prominent part of town, a lot of cars go through there, and we're going to be re-construting that intersection. And we're looking at, there's been a design, it's gone through an extensive design process, but we're reopening the design in a limited way to look at whether or not we can make increased accommodations for bicycles. And there's going to be, I understand, there's a bunch of people who've been working on some alternative plans to present to us, and the state is helping us out with some design consulting. And we're going to see if any of those are feasible without affecting the project cost and the timeframe, and affecting the other modes that this road needs to handle. So it should be an interesting meeting, and I hope people who are interested in that will attend.
Very good. Anything else? Okay, now we're getting to public comment. We do a lot, 15 minutes for public comment. Typically, we say three minutes per comment, but we had quite a few people sign up tonight, so I'm going to ask everyone to limit themselves to two minutes, so that we are able to get through the whole list of people who have signed up to speak tonight. And I would just want to caution people that I'm going to stop you if you are violating the privacy rights or undermining the reputation of any specific individuals. Okay, so the first one on the list is Mariah Nobrega. So two minutes, please.
Okay. This is the first time I've done this, so do my best to stay within two minutes. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name's Mariah Nobrega. I live at 33 Bauker Street. I'm a town meeting member for Precinct 4. I'm a Pierce parent. I am a graduate of Lawrence School and of VHS, class of 98. So I'm also the person who's initiated the Brooklineoverride.com website, which many of you might have seen recently, which advocates currently for a fully funded override and a 100% debt exclusion for the devotion school project. And I've heard a lot from many people over the past couple of days, "How dare you advocate for a fully funded school system?" And I'd like to say now that I dare because I've been a student in the Brookline schools. I know what an amazing Brookline education can be, and I don't think that we are currently there, but that's where we need to be. And we are a community that is highly educated, that's our values. We're, I think I looked up on the census, we have twice the state average for the number of, the percentage of people that have a bachelor's degree. So obviously, in a community with high, with values that support education, we really need to support our schools and our youngest citizens as well. And I think it's a values issue for all of Brookline. We look at how we support other similar values for people. For example, the taxi medallions. You know, we looked and we said that, we didn't, we wanted to make sure that the working conditions for cab drivers, two weeks ago, we believed that by voting on Warren Article 15, that we were supporting the working conditions for cab drivers. We need to make a similar stand for our children in our schools. So right now, I'd ask you to, as we move forward over the next month or two, as you're defining the ballot questions for the May override, that you be extremely bold and show some, really, some strong leadership as our Brookline executive body. It's under your power to craft a message that will really bring the whole town together, and not just any one section of voters, but all of our voters. So specific things that I'm hoping you will do. I went back and looked at the language for the 2008 override. It was really great, the way that it was bundled, and really showed people a little bit of everything of what could be, how the override would really support many of the different aspects of the town, and how they could really get behind that. And I think that we need to be proactive. I think that we really need to look at affirming to the town now, push the school ratio, the school funding ratio out of our, out of our main budget now to support schools, so that your actions show that if you don't support the override, we really mean it, that these are the things that aren't funded in our budget and will go away under the override.
Okay. Can I, can I, I think your time is up, but thank you, I think we...
I have one last sentence. Can I say the one last sentence?
Okay.
Which is that I'm looking forward, along with many other Brookline residents, to supporting the efforts that you take, strong leadership in this area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Brooke Sames.
Let me introduce myself. My name is Gerald Austin Jr., firefighter Gerald Austin Jr. I'm coming before you, the board, first and foremost, to say that I have lost all respect, trust, and anything whatsoever with your administration. I am coming before you to look at everything that I presented, and to ask that you bring in an independent contractor to focus on the racism within the fire department, not the entire fire department, certain individuals, and how the town administration handled my situation. I have been on the job since 2002, and since 2002, I have not had any incidents until 2010. And since I spoke up and asked what the policies were, in my case, I have been persecuted. I have been treated like trash. I have been disrespected by your administration, Sandra DeBo in particular, and I refuse to deal with her in any way, shape, or form.
I'm going to ask people not to say...
Okay, so...
You can talk about the department.
The department has a number of firefighters who are amazing and support everything that I'm saying. But there are a few in this department that are like cancer. Who they are, I can't point them out, because they're cowards and hide behind a false smile and false respect. And I'm asking you, as the town council, to bring in an independent entity to find out what's going on and to fix it. I'm not the problem, but the town administration is making me the problem, making me have to jump through hoops just to keep my job, demanding that I take medication, because they feel I have some type of mental disorder, all because I questioned what were they going to do about this situation. Now I have no faith in them anymore. The only other person I, or the people that I can deal with and request some kind of help is you. This is as far as it's going. I'm following as the necessary steps it takes. I'm not doing anything wrong. And for this, I think we need to find out what the problem is and to fix it. And that's all I've been asking from day one, is to just fix it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ames, did you, you were on the list?
I will, I will speak for Brooks Ames.
Okay.
My name is Scott Huggins. I have grown up in Brookline. I am a resident of Brookline and a taxpayer. I believe that I deserve some type of explanation. I deserve to know how you are running our town. Brooke Ames says, I mean Gerald Austin has worked for the fire department for 10 years. He sacrificed his life for all of us, and in return, when he complains about a racist voicemail that was left on his phone, he is the one that is punished. And the person who left the voicemail is rewarded. Now, I would like to know, why is racism tolerated here in Brookline? The residents will not stand for that. And he needs to be done justice. He is the one that complained, and now he is out of work. A diabetic now who hasn't been paid for weeks and can't afford his medicine. He has kids to take care of. He can't afford that, all because he complained of a racist voicemail that was left on his phone. You are the ones that need to correct this. So I ask you, are you racist? Because if you are not part of the solution, you are part of the problem. Thank you.
Okay. Larry Oney.
I'm talking to you as, in your role as fire commissioners. And I am asking you and demanding of you...
Mr. Dally?
I'm asking and demanding of you to do your job as fire commissioners. You all lend some of your authority to other people, okay? And I'm asking for you to take back your authority and exhibit your responsibility as a fire commissioner. You're also police commissioners. We have a serious public safety problem, social climate problem in Brookline, where there is institutional racism. And as public safety commissioners, I'm asking you, and other citizens are, to act responsibly and to override the behavior of people that you've lent some authority to. So that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Arthur Conquest.
They have destroyed and are destroying hundreds of thousands of lives and do not know and do not want to know about it. It is not permissible that the authors of devastation should also be innocent. It is the innocent that constitutes the crime. It's a quote from James Baldwin. What you, as the fire commissioners of Brookline, have done to Gerald Austin, a black firefighter who has, for a decade, risked his life saving residents in this community, is inhumanly inexcusable, inhumanly cruel, and embarrassingly outrageous. Mr. Austin only asks you, as the fire commissioners, to take appropriate actions when his immediate supervisor, Lieutenant Paul Pender, left a racial epithet on his answering machine at his home. How is it humanely possible that you, as the commissioners, promote Lieutenant Pender to the rank of captain in the fire, in the fire department, and then stand by as the recipient of this racial slur? Gerald Austin is systematically harassed by his colleagues in the fire department and put through the wringer and given the runaround by various department heads in Brookline Town Hall. What's more, you, as the so-called leaders of this community, allow the lawyer who has taken over his case, Brooks Ames, to be threatened with arrests if he attempts to defend Gerald Austin in his appeal against your asinine nonsense. You are not only racist, but the keepers, the gatekeepers of white supremacy. And on a personal level, Mrs. Nancy Daley, you...
Okay, no.
I'm just...
We're not, no, we're not doing personal stuff.
But I'm, you, you told me, you said to me, okay, sitting right there, that there was something wrong with me using the term "house servant." Now just hold on. And yet, you have allowed an official in the fire department to leave the N-word on Gerald Austin's phone, answering machine, and you're chastising me. Selectman Goldstein said to me that the reason that he did not put me on the Human Relations Youth Resource Commission was because I used the word "house servant." And then he said, "I can't really tell you about the N-word that was left on Gerald Austin's phone because the case was in litigation." I've since heard the message that was left on his machine. And I don't understand that. You're telling me that the N-word is the equivalent to "house servant"? I disagree. That's all I'm saying. I'm not stating a fact.
Okay.
Okay?
I think your time is up.
I don't think so. Let the word go forth to one and all blacks, black people in the town of Brookline, by the way of the disgraceful treatment Gerald Austin has received from you to this point. If you complain about racism in the town of Brookline, you will be summarily destroyed by any means necessary. And finally, let me just say this. I think the most hypocritical thing that you're doing is hosting the Martin Luther King Day event in January, when in fact, you don't really believe in the values and message that Dr. King gave up his life for. And you're not allowing this community to be committed to all groups of people by supporting the racist act that occurred towards Gerald Austin. And I hope that everybody, the five of you, the six of you, wake up, okay, and understand the world is changing, and you have to come along with it. Thank you.
Okay, is Cruz Sinabria here?
He is not.
Okay, Mariella Ames.
First, I want to echo everything that Scott Huggins said. And I've been here before, since 2009, asking that you deal with the poor race relations problem of Brookline and the administration, and specifically, that this town has with black people. The problem is not Gerald, was not Gerald. The problem in this case was Pender and the failure of the administration, who was incapable of removing and dealing with racist behavior. Deservately or not, you are in charge of the town right now. And it shouldn't be Gerald the one to leave. Racist actions, perpetrators, and administrators who are incapable of dealing with that should be gone. As, as leaders of this town, you have the responsibility to correct what is wrong. The appeal of the failed determinations made in this case by administrators under you are on your table. My question to you is, what are you going to do? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, we do not usually respond to comments, but I feel I must make a brief statement here, and we are not going to respond to the specifics raised tonight by Mr. Austin, either here or in his letter, that I believe was widely distributed. In accordance with state laws pertaining to privacy and confidentiality of employees' personnel-related matters, we have been advised by town council not to speak about the specifics of this case. I do know that town council's office has responded, however. I want to say, on behalf of the town, my fellow board members, and the town administrator, Mr. Kleckner, that we do not permit or condone workplace discrimination in any form, including the use of racial slurs. In fact, we reject the suggestion that is made tonight that we are racist and discriminatory. While our formal policy against discrimination was adopted after the 2010 incident at issue here, the steps outlined in that policy were followed in that case, and in fact, became the basis for the formal policy. Employees who want to make a complaint will find that the town is more than willing to work with them to investigate and address such complaints, provided those employees are willing to provide the necessary information. The board, and Mr. Kleckner and his staff, will continue to take all necessary steps to ensure that the town's employees now and in the future are protected from discrimination in the workplace. We're soon to make appointments to the newly constituted Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations Commission, and we look forward to working with the commission and the associated department to further encourage diversity and seek out and eradicate any discrimination or unfair treatment that we hear about. So thank you for coming.
I am forced to...
No, wait, I'm sorry, the public comment is...
To respond here in the public comment.
The public comment is over.
I didn't use my three minutes.
I'm going to ask you to leave the podium, please.
But of all people, it was you, Ms. Daley, who brought up a letter that wasn't even published at the time, which, which...
That letter was on the website of the Brookline tab.
That letter was not published yet.
Okay. I'm asking you to leave the podium.
But you, as the head of the new Dicker Commission, new Diversity and Inclusion Commission, you excluded employees from having the option to come to the commission in cases of discrimination. So I find it particularly disgraceful to...
You know what, Ms. Ames? Town meeting did not like your version of what you thought the Human Relations Commission should be, and they voted against it on several occasions.
And you draft that new bylaw for the new Diversity and Inclusion Commission.
I worked with a committee, and we drafted it. Yes, and town meeting liked our version, and they didn't like your version.
What I'm, what I'm telling you is, you are at the top of the administration, and you can change things. And that's what we are asking.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to ask you again to please leave the podium. Okay, we're going to move on to our regular calendar now. The miscellaneous. I had some corrections to the minutes. Anybody else? So I'll move the minutes as amended. All in favor? I'm sorry, what were the, that was the minutes of...
November 25.
November 25.
As amended.
Okay. As amended. All in favor? Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. And then we are going to move on to, the, we have a recoding of $5,227.40 in connection with the Lower Beacon Street sewer separation project, Phase 2.
Good evening.
So you were trying to slip one by the MWRA.
They're pretty sharp.
Yeah.
This request is a result of a audit, a final audit, that the MWRA did in September. And the findings were that there was $5,227.40 of ineligible costs. And these ineligible costs were for engineering services during construction. The, as you know, this MWRA paid for most of this project, and they're seeking reimbursement for this part that is not eligible.
Any questions about that?
No.
Nope. So we're, we're paying this amount then, right?
Yes.
And we have some money someplace to do so, I presume?
That's correct.
Okay.
I think we're approving a transfer to do it.
All right. So I'll move favorable action then on recoding the $5,227.40 from one account to another of the Lower Beacon Street sewer separation project, Phase 2. All in favor? Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, C is, we have an expenditure of $109,275 for a collapsed sanitary sewer main at the intersection of Beacon Street and Washington. Hello, tell us about this.
Certainly, just to give some background, a few months back, we discovered a collapsed eight-inch sewer main on Beacon Street at the intersection of Washington Street. Not only was it approximately 17 to 18 feet deep, but the further complicated it was, it was, the collapse was beneath a 48-inch MWRA water main. So we went with the MWRA to plan it, how we were going to fix it. They also had to come up with contingency plans if, in fact, the 48-inch main was compromised during the construction. So we got approval from the MWRA roughly in mid-September to do our excavation. We solicited three bids on an emergency basis for three different contractors to do the work. De La Sandro Corp. was the low bidder. Their original bid was roughly $97,000. The highest bid was about $196,000.
Wow.
Wow.
Big difference.
So we hired De La Sandro to do it. They started at the beginning of October, took about 10 days, with minimal disruption, considering the location, did a terrific job, and this is now here, the authorization to pay them.
Okay. Well, I was hoping it was the work that was already done, because I knew the area had been...
Yes.
Kind of under construction for a while. Any questions?
No, I just remember hearing, it seems to me, at the time, there was some damage done to an adjacent property or something, or have I mixed it up with another?
No.
No?
As a matter of fact, I went and hired a company to do what they call, it was called a pre-blast, pre-blast survey...
Ah.
Of the surrounding buildings, because they were driving steel beams 30 feet down in the vibration. So we took it upon ourselves to hire somebody first to do a pre-blast survey in the event that something happened, which turned out that everything was fine, so...
I'm glad I will, I was wrong.
Okay, yeah.
Very pleased to hear that.
So, Nancy?
Yes.
This is coming out of the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund, so the ratepayers will pick up the tab eventually.
Yes.
Okay. Any, any other questions? All right, I'm going to move favorable action then on authorizing the expenditure of $109,275 for emergency repair of a collapsed sanitary sewer main at Beacon and Washington. All in favor? Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Waschinsky?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Thank you, Mr. Russell.
I think we should fix our broken sewers.
Yes, yes, definitely. Okay, Chief, grant award for traffic enforcement?
Good evening. Yes, we were able to apply for a couple of grants that I have in front of you tonight. One of them is for traffic enforcement. It's from the Executive Office of Public Safety in the amount of $15,000. And what that does will allow us to run five different mobilizations during the year. The mobilizations are... The mobilizations are to deal with speed and aggressive driving, operating under the influence of alcohol, distracted driving, click of the ticket, and a second one of driving under the influence of alcohol. What we do there is we take a look at where our complaints and our accidents are frequent, and we assign an officer as part of this mobilization. Each mobilization runs for a specific period of time, and it's $3,000 per mobilization.
Is this, you know, your officers lying in wait there on Route 9? Is this the money that pays for this?
On the outbound side, yes.
Any questions?
No.
Okay. Well, once again, Chief, I want to compliment your office on their good work in getting as much grant money as possible to do what you need to do.
Thank you.
And I will move favorable action on accepting this grant of $15,000 from Public Safety. All in favor? Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Woschinski?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Thank you, Chief.
Did we skip one?
Oh, there's the...
There's a second one, yes.
C. Oh, sorry.
The smaller one.
The D, okay.
I know that, you know, we have a very robust child safety inspection.
Okay.
We do a couple of workshops over the year, and we deal with new parents that are just having children, and they'll come in, and we'll install the car seat for them and then show them how to do it. We know that some people cannot afford the proper car seats, and this $2,000 grant from the state will allow us to purchase some car seats to give to people that are in need.
That's great. How much is, like, a good car seat?
I'm not sure, because when we buy it in bulk, we get a different price. I'm not exactly sure what it is.
And do you run out? I mean, is that something...
Yes, we do.
Oh, okay.
This group here that we would be having, the seats are probably purchased in bulk by the state, and then we will get our allotted share. But we do run out.
Well, it's a good program.
How do people who may need a car seat get one? Do they contact somebody in your department, or do they just come and...
No, we have a phone number. It's on our website on how to... Which number to call. We'll set up an appointment, and we have people that will do it. If it's an emergency, they'll set it up within the following days. The checkpoints that we do are more formalized to people that aren't in a hurry to get it done, and we'll have people come out at, like, we probably require, like, a minimum of 18 people that need car seats installed, and we'll have the appropriate number of police officers to do it. Each one of the police officers that do it are trained and certified by the state to know how to install the car seats properly.
And if you do run out, I mean, is there any place you can send people that, you know, other resources that might be able to help them out on the state level or anything?
I know that they've been in contact with the state again. I don't know for a fact if there's someone that's just committed to doing this. That I don't know.
Okay.
If they call the number, I'm sure they can get the answer there, and maybe I'll... Maybe we should look into it and make sure people are aware of that, so I will look into that.
Yeah, give them information at least, if you can't give them a car seat.
Correct.
That'd be good. All right, well, that sounds like a good use of the $2,000. Did you have something, Mr. Kleckner?
No, I was just going to say, if you want to take this...
Oh, okay, okay. So, I'm going to move favorable action on that grant and the $2,000 for the car seats. All in favor? Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Woschinski?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye.
Thank you.
And Mr. Kleckner has just pointed out to me, you have another item on the main agenda, filling a position of a senior clerk typist. This is item number five on the main calendar, because I guess Veterans Affairs stole somebody away from you, huh?
Swooped right in.
Yeah. So, you want to tell us about that?
Yes, the position was filled by a person in our office, and like you said, she flipped over to Veterans Affairs the Friday after... The Friday before Thanksgiving, and she's been working with Bill Sensen, which created the vacancy in our business office. Our business office combined the Police and Fire Department's budget, billing, accounts receivable, grants, they manage all that. There are three people, three clerk type, senior clerks that work in there. One of the positions is empty, and that's the one that I'm looking to fill. I have spoken with Liz Lea in the Human Relations Department, or Human Resources Department, that if the Board grants authority to go ahead and fill it, we will be posting the vacancy in a number of places around the area, and HR will take care of the postings for us.
Okay, I think I should say, since Chairman Goldstein isn't here, that we hope that they will make every effort to get as diverse an applicant pool as they possibly can for this job.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions on it?
Nope.
All right, I'm going to move favorable action then on the question of authorizing the filling of the vacancy in the position of Senior Clerk Typist in Public Safety Business Office. All in favor? Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Woschinski?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we want to go back, and there is some...
We had a new one tonight, too, didn't we?
No, that didn't materialize.
Oh, okay.
Okay. But the... I did want to mention one of the... We've asked for a permit for an event on December 5th at the Lars Anderson Auto Museum, but from 6:30 to 11:00. But I do want to mention what this is for. This is a benefit for the town of Brookline's Food Pantry and Toys for Tots, so both good causes. And that's... I'd like to move favorable action on that and also urge people to attend if they can.
And I'm going to agree, but if I don't... If you mind, today is Giving Tuesday, and I sort of feel like this is an opportunity to say that this is a notion that was first initiated in 2012 around Thanksgiving, and I think it's a very strong opportunity for us to sort of put our holiday spirit into philanthropic energy, if I can put it that way. And I think the notion for this actually, which started in New York City, was intended to provide some balance for the onslaught of marketing and shopping publicity that happens around this time of year. So, I know that many Brookline not-for-profit charitable organizations have participated in the concept of Giving Tuesday, and I just would like to say that in addition to supporting the Food Pantry, there's lots of other not-for-profit charitable organizations, and I hope we will all support them as generously as we can.
Very good. And I think your former employer...
Brookline Community Foundation.
Actually, serves as sort of a bit of an umbrella organization...
Yes, right, they are.
And helps many of the... Those individual organizations in town, the charitable things, so. Great. All right, I'm going to move a favorable action then on that permit to sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages, all for the dance benefit on December 5th at Lars Anderson. All in favor? Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Woschinski?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. And then, we have another all kinds alcoholic beverage license to the Jamaica Hills Association for a holiday banquet December 6th from 7:00 to 11:00 at Dexter Southfield School. I'll move favorable action on that. All in favor? Selectman DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Woschinski?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Okay, now, we move on back to the main calendar. We have a couple of... We have a couple of interviews before we get to you, Mr. McCave. Getting excited about talking about taxes?
Yes, I would just like to get something ready, Jim. Is my in the way?
Well, we are going to call people up there for our interviews. Yeah. Sorry about that, but... Is John Bowman here? Come on up to the microphone. And you are interested in the Complete Streets Study Committee?
Yes.
So, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you applied for this.
Well, I'll read a few things from the memo that I sent. I have a PhD in Transportation Systems from MIT. I'm a self-employed consultant to metropolitan planning organizations and other public agencies since 1998. I have a longstanding interest in non-motorized transportation and am familiar with the Complete Streets movement. I could say more about my qualifications, but maybe I'll skip to my interests. I'm interested in giving back to Brookline. I've lived here since 1992, and as I approach and enter my retirement years, I want to find positive ways to help the town. And I have a special interest in non-motorized transportation and qualifications that I think fit well, so.
Great. Well, thank you for applying. And since you mentioned that you're entering into retirement or something, I want to...
Not yet.
Okay. Well, I want to just say, because I serve as this Board's representative, the Council on Aging, and I know some of the seniors feel that... I think you're a bicyclist as well, are you not?
Well, I actually am... I am a bicyclist, but I'm more of a pedestrian.
I was going to say, we know him as a pedestrian, at least. He's been giving us a little informal advice with the Devotion School Project.
Okay. Well, that's what I was going to say. Some of the seniors feel like the pedestrian point of view is not being fully represented, so that's good.
Well, I will be very happy to represent that.
Yeah.
In fact, I found that in order to get enough exercise, Brookline is small enough that I need to walk rather than bicycle to get my exercise.
Oh, okay, great.
So, I walked in tonight from Beale Street.
Yeah. You and I have a different view of what adequate exercise, I think. Let me also ask you, though, one of the things I'm hoping that we hear from this committee is perhaps some effort to identify sources of funding for some of these ideas, because I think it's going to be hard, just on a town basis, to do the big things. And so, I would love to have this committee spend a few meetings focusing on, you know, here's some possible federal or state sources that we might look to, to get things done.
Well, I'm happy to participate in that type of activity. My understanding is that the Complete Streets momentum within Massachusetts is directly related to actions at the Commonwealth level, where some funding is to be made available and just by making this policy in the appropriate way that will qualify us there. Beyond that, I'm not sure about how to work with the committee today.
Great. Selectman Woschinski, questions?
Yeah, I know Mass DOT has a lot of interest in this, and they have a Complete Streets Program Manager, and they're helping us out with Gateway East by providing some design money. So, perhaps, you know, that's an indication of a direction to come, so.
But I'm going to just follow up with the notion that Complete Streets, as I understand the concept, it's sort of oddly named in a funny way, because it's really meant to go, in a sense, to cover the entire public sphere, including sidewalks. And so, it seems to me that it is... I don't want to speak unkindly of transportation folks historically, but we have certainly been giving more time and space to vehicles, motorized vehicles, I guess I would say, than to foot traffic and bicycling. And I'm very pleased that we now have this notion that we have to address all of the modes of transit, so, including public transit, I guess I would add. And I know, actually, that Mr. Bowman brings a good range of experience and skill sets to the table, so.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for coming in and talking with us, and we appreciate your interest. We're... I don't know when we're going to be making appointments on this, but it'll probably be in the next month or so.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think we already know you a little bit from your many years on preservation, but tell us why you were interested in this committee? Or I actually wondered, as I was reading through your application, it almost sounded more like maybe the Arts Commission was more...
Well, no. I was one of the founding members of the Arts Council in Brookline in 1980. Plus, I've been on the Board of the Art Center. I mean, I've done all those things, and I feel that this Complete Streets encompasses not only the harmony of the pedestrian, the automobiles, public transportation, and cyclists, but it's also... At one point years ago, I was appointed to a committee for arts in the streets. I think it's beautification of our streets also, and I'm concerned about the safety of the pedestrians and of what's going on in the cramped Beacon Street with bicyclists, and it's... I'd really like to have my say in it, so.
Great, okay.
Very interested.
Questions?
Well, I'm... Do you have any thoughts about how we could beautify our streets? Have you... I know you've thought about it a lot.
Yes, I have. And then, meeting, by the way, meeting with Todd Corain the other day, he told me that in order to get federal funding, we need to have complete streets. So, if the federal government is funding these complete streets...
Okay, very good.
...in places like...
So, you've already answered my question.
Yeah, definitely.
That's good.
And I feel that we could maybe raise some money and have... And utilize some of the artists in town to have art and maybe have people, like we used to do, is have people sponsor some flowers and nice landscaping. You know, there's a lot that I think can be done to beautify Brookline a lot more than it is.
Yeah, okay, great. Did you have a question, Selectman Franco?
I will ask, just for you to expand a little bit on the beautification. I know you just talked about public art...
Right.
...by reference in flowers. Do you have a view on benches or other sort of...
Oh, I definitely have a view on benches. As Chair of Preservation for many years, we were in charge of choosing the benches and everything that's there right now. And I think, you know, part of it is placement. I know a lot of our benches that are close to the street get ruined when they have snow removal. I mean, there's a lot that could be done. All of this will be taken into consideration, and I don't know exactly what you're allowing the Complete Street people to do, so until I get on the committee, I'm not sure.
I don't think... Is this one of our committees?
Yeah.
It is. So, have we... I don't believe we've drawn up a charge yet.
Yeah. And as I understand, the purpose is to help us create a policy...
Right.
...towards Complete Streets and bring that sensitivity to all of our street projects as we go forward.
And have you been assigned to this, Selectman Woschinski, or you're unofficially involved?
No one has asked me.
Yeah.
And it actually was Selectman Goldstein that had mentioned this whole thing to me to begin with.
Oh, okay. Maybe he's taking it on himself.
I don't know.
All right. Well, thanks for coming in.
Maybe he is.
Thank you, Sherri. And we'll, as I said, we're, you know, probably in the next few weeks or so. Hi, welcome. So, tell us of your interest in this committee.
Well, I've been interested in this topic for at least five years. I don't have any professional experience with it. I'm just an interested citizen, but I've heard a number of inspirational speakers. I mentioned them in my application letter, Enrique Penylosa from Columbia, Jamie Lerner, a number of others that have visited livable streets, and so I feel that it's an area that can serve many useful purposes at once, you know, global as well as local, and so it just is a really important issue.
Okay. Great. Questions?
I just observed that one of the things, and I was just looking here to remember for sure that this is what you said. I am interested in crosswalks, too.
Okay.
However, my view is not to have raised ones, because they really do create problems, but patterned ones. And we've actually started some, we've initiated some around the town, where you have a good, clear visual indication that it's a safe... Excuse me. A safe place for pedestrians to be. And at the same time, has a strong... It's easy for a vehicle driving to see the patterned ones in ways that is not always so clear, particularly when the old stripe ones get worn down. But I was kind of curious to know why you thought raised was supposedly better.
Well, I think it's been used in a number of places. I think as close by as Cambridge, they've got a few. The idea is that the area between the curb then is sort of considered as the pedestrians' area first and foremost, and then secondarily... area first and foremost, and then secondarily, the cars area. So when they approach one and pass over it, they realize that they have to be watchful for pedestrians. So it just kind of shifts the balance of power slightly in favor of pedestrians.
We're not so concerned about the cars, we're concerned about our snowplows. Because I like those roads to be cleared.
Sure, sure, and I've heard that concern, and I appreciate that as well. You know, there are speed bumps on Winchester Street, and so they manage...
It's been a subject of a lot of contention, those speed bumps.
I don't think those are viewed as a model.
Sure, sure. It's just an idea that, you know, may or may not apply here.
Yeah, okay, great.
I wanted to ask you about, in your application materials, you noted you'd be interested in closing, more scheduled street closings to encourage community gatherings. I wanted to sort of pick your brain a little bit on what your vision was. Were you sort of looking for the memorial drive model, where you close a street and allow for bicycling or pedestrian access or rollerblading during a fixed amount of time? Were you looking for sort of a block party type model?
I think both would be things that are good to try, and I think they both would create, you know, different kinds of advantages. The Cambridge River Festival, for example, is an event that I think would be fun to do on a smaller scale somewhere in Coolish...
If only we had a river.
Well, the river is incidental, I think if you shut off a few blocks on Harvard Street, say, you could have a nice event there with musicians and dancers or whatever, there are a lot of people in the town.
We did, we did for the Brookline 300th. We had a, we had all of Harvard Street closed off.
And my guess is that you'd get a good, strong support from the Coolish Corner Arts Festival folks.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think there are a lot of benefits. Again, I know there are downsides, that there's some expense involved in shutting down streets, rerouting MBTA buses, things of that nature. So, you know, all these things have to be taken into account, but I think the advantage could be...
As I remember, when we did this for the 300th celebration of Brookline, the big expense was that we had all of our DPW people and everybody there to set up these roadblocks and redirect people, and, you know, we had the police there, we had everybody there. So it was, it was actually quite an expensive but fun event. We have been allowing more streets to close for Halloween. You know, there, I think we've added a couple, so I think we have three or four now.
Those tend to be side streets, right?
Yeah.
We don't close like Harvard Street.
No, we don't close Beacon Street or Harvard Street, but, for that. But some neighborhoods that have a lot of trick or treating have wanted to do that, and we have allowed it, it seems to have been successful. So, okay, well, thank you so much for coming in, and, well, you'll be hearing from us. Nina Brown, trustees of Walnut Hills. I was reading through your resume, and it almost sounded like you could have been applying to the Complete Streets.
Well, thank you, Nancy, because I would like to say the city of Boston has done a very good publication about Complete Streets. That would be worth consulting if Brookline is thinking about doing something like that.
Yeah, we'll have to get a hold of that, thank you. So go ahead, what are you, why are you interested in Walnut Hills?
I'm a landscape architect, and I'm interested in all types of land that are available for public use. I served on the Brookline Parks and Recreation Commission for seven years, and I'm currently one of the friends of the old burying ground on Walnut Street, where we're working on getting some of the ironwork repaired.
Actually, there's some already done, I think. It's gorgeous, the part that's been restored, which was there recently, so.
Yeah, yeah, that looks really terrific. Each one of those panels is different. So I received an email from Bob Cook, who's the chairman, and I used to work with him on a project in the Arnold Arboretum when he was director. And I've also worked with Aaron Schute-Galentine, and I would be interested in helping out with the Walnut Hills Cemetery. I think cemeteries are important for many reasons. They're emotionally important, they're also have great historical value, and they also have ecological value, so I'm interested in that, those reasons.
Great, okay, well, we actually have two openings, and you and another candidate have applied who are not incumbents, so the odds are in your favor, I would say. I, you know, the Forest Hills one in Boston, they have some events, like they have this thing where they light candles and put them on on their little lake there. I thought it's, it's actually kind of fun, you know, and I think it'd be, Walnut Hills is such a pretty cemetery.
It is, it is.
It'd be nice if we could have some kind of thing like that there.
Yes, it definitely is.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you so much for coming in, and you will hear from us before too long.
Thanks very much.
Okay. All right, Mr. McCabe, you can sit up now.
While we're on time?
Just on time, yeah. So I like to keep these meetings moving along.
Thank you.
Before we get to the, for those of you that are in the audience, before we get to the override discussion, we're going to hear about setting the tax rate for the upcoming year, so it's kind of...
I guess they're related.
They are, they're related, yeah.
All right, thank you very much. My name is Gary McCabe, Chief Assessor for the town, representing the Board of Assessors. And I'd like to introduce, first of all, the other members of the Board of Assessors. Dr. Harold Peterson is with us tonight, and Mark Mazur. And also, the Deputy Chief Assessor, Rashid Belacine is here as well, trying to answer any questions that you might have. We appreciate the opportunity to make this presentation as part of your annual tax classification hearing. I don't know if you want to open the hearing before or after the presentation, I'm not sure.
Okay, yeah, we'll officially open the hearing, I'll move that we open that. All in favor, Selectmen DeWitt?
Aye.
Selectman Woszinski?
Aye.
Selectman Franco?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Take it away.
Yes, thank you. So, first of all, we have a presentation, try to keep that as brief as possible. The slides for the presentation will be available on the website, the assessors' website, starting tomorrow morning, for review by anyone who's interested. It's also in Tab 3 of your workbook, other slides. There are several other tabs there that I just want to bring your attention to. The first tab is just the brief letter of introduction, notice of the hearing, a summary of statistics or facts associated with tax classification. I apologize for the last minute update on that this evening, but we did find a couple of typos we wanted to try to correct for you. So there's a substitute page in...
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out, where this goes.
Tab 1, yes, thank you.
It's Tab 1, near the back of Tab 1, okay.
Right, it is a three-year summary of the classification data, we'll call it. There's, in Tab 1, there's also a nice chart of the history of the median assessed values. We'll use some terminology tonight that's specific to this topic, like median assessed values or average assessed values, things like that. I'll try to explain those as we go along. And also in Tab 1, there's a summary of our top taxpayers, both real estate and some personal property accounts. In Tab 2, there's some additional information that we provided for you to consider, subsequent to the presentation tonight, but also in, sort of in concert with the presentation, that provides more detail about the impact of various options that we're going to be presenting. Those are in Tab 2. Tab 3, slides of the presentation. Tab 4 is something we've traditionally provided, the Board of Selectmen, that is, the Board of Assessors, have provided. And that's a look at individual properties that have sold in the period that we've analyzed, which was 2013 in this case, the prior assessment and proposed fiscal year 15 assessment. And then in Tab 5, there's some additional data that's relevant to setting the tax rate, tax recap, that sort of thing.
I found Tab 4 especially interesting.
Thank you, Selectman Woszinski, yes.
Well, I want to just say briefly, or maybe you can say this better than I can, because I think we have a lot of people here who may have come more to hear about the override information, but I'm sure they'll be interested in this. So historically, we have taken a homeowner's exemption, which means if you live in your property, we have, you get, we allow you an exemption at the start, and that kind of tends to benefit the lower-priced properties more than the higher-priced properties.
That's correct.
And then the second factor is, we also have tended to shift a higher rate of taxes onto commercial and industrial property, which benefits the residential property. So the commercial and industrial, many communities don't shift at all. Commercial industrial would pay the same as residential, the same rate for whatever they get assessed at. We have historically shifted so that they pay a higher rate than...
Correct, yes, thank you, that's a nice overview. There are several things that the Selectmen are charged with determining annually. From a tax policy perspective, one is called the residential exemption, as you just summarized, owner-occupied property can get tax relief simply by owning and occupying that property. In year one, they need, the first year, they need to apply for that with the Board of Assessors. And the application will continue as long as there's no change in that status, that you own and occupy that property. The Board of Selectmen vote annually on what percent of the average residential value that exemption will represent. I have several slides on that topic, as well as material in the workbook, we'll take a look at that. The other tax policy matter is indeed tax classification, which every city in town has the option of pursuing. Brookline Selectmen have adopted tax classification regularly since it's been an option in the early 1980s, came in with Proposition 2 and 1/2, which in fact does allow the shifting of some of the tax burden by splitting the rates into two rates. The amount of the shift, in our case, has been about 7%. So what we're going to see is a mix of property in Brookline that's approximately 10% commercial and 90% residential. And with classification, what the Board of Selectmen are able to do is take that 90% residential value and shift about 7% of the tax to commercial, so the tax burden shifts down to about 83%, whereas the commercial value at 10%, the tax burden becomes about 17. That's what classification does, right? That's the choices.
Let me just state one other thing, it's important to understand, it's kind of a zero-sum game. The amount that we can tax as a community is fixed by Proposition 2 and 1/2, and all we're doing is shifting amongst the different classes of taxpayers this fixed amount of money. So if we, if someone is paying less, it's because someone else is paying more.
But, if I can follow up on that, the other thing we do try to do is balance, and the residential exemption substantially benefits the lowest-valued properties, residential properties. So it means that if someone owns condominium that's valued below a half a million dollars, they get, they get a benefit from the residential exemption, which is substantially greater than anyone who owns a more expensive property. But in a funny way, we try our best to come up with a mix that is fair, and certainly that helps the first-time homeowner.
Thank you both for that, those additional information, that's exactly correct. The residential exemption, again, from a tax policy perspective, makes the real estate tax less regressive and more progressive. It shifts the burden from the higher-valued properties, where there's an assumption that there's a greater ability to pay, to the lower-valued properties, where there's an assumption that there's a lesser ability to pay. And I know Selectman Daly has asked this, the number of years I've been involved, you know, what's that break-even point? And as you'll see in the material that we're going to present, this year it's $1.5 million at a 20% residential exemption. So if your property is assessed for more than, and you own, if it's assessed for more than $1.5 million, and you own or occupy that and are eligible therefore for the residential exemption, the net change in tax is actually a greater tax burden than it otherwise would be. And if your assessed value is below $1.5 million, the net changes that your tax burden is less than it otherwise would be without the residential exemption. These tax options are, you know, numbers-driven, although rooted in policy, and I appreciate your understanding of them very much. In addition to all of that, the basis for the real estate and personal property tax is the market value of the property, which we recently recalculated. So I want to talk about that. The fiscal year 15 assessments are, in some cases, dramatically different than they were in fiscal year 14. There was a three-year revaluation cycle for the town, townwide, we recalculated every single assessment with some, certain amount of effort, including, you know, onsite inspections and recalculating through adjusted formulas, that sort of thing. So there was a non-uniform change in real estate values in Brookline, and so that non-uniform change is reflected in the assessments. In fact, it may be the most diverse and dynamic change that we've seen in many years. And I'm going to point to some of that as we go through this material. So, you know, since the assessment is the basis for the tax, not only is the rate going to change, as you'll see, and likely downward, but assessed values even on the same street for similar properties, say, single-family homes, could change at different rates, because those homes are indeed different in some ways. So that complicates the issue, I think. So we're going to speak about representatives for certain groups or classes of property, like, again, the average or the median. But please understand that not every property changed by that amount, that there's quite a range of changes. So we'll take a look at that as well. And I think that makes it a little bit harder process, so. My understanding is that the hearing will be held tonight, as we've just said, but that you won't take a vote on this matter until next week, is that correct? Okay. So anytime in between, if you have questions, or if anyone else, taxpayers or residents have questions, we'll be available between now and next week. So the first thing we want to look at is, just a quick reminder that our reliance on property tax is, looks like this. It represents 69% of our townwide budget, followed by our enterprise accounts and local receipts, you'll hear more about that from the budget directors. But just, you know, local receipts include motor vehicle excise tax, for example, that's not part of the property tax, also administered by the assessors' office, but it's actually found down in local receipts.
And parking meters.
Parking meters are in other...
Oh, really?
Actually, that's 3%. The local receipts are motor vehicle excise, rooms and meals taxes, so you have another local tax that's actually administered by the state.
I stand corrected.
And permits are the other big piece of the local receipts. I also want to point out that our reliance on the property tax has actually changed. We're going to try looking at this, I think this pointer's going to show up on the TV. At least it's supposed to, is it?
Yes.
All right, all right, here we go. So in fiscal year '08, 63% of our budget was property tax, and now it's 69%. So our reliance has increased by some 6% of our budget. I took a quick, and over those eight years, I took a quick look at the statewide statistics in that issue, and they're very similar, that the reliance on property tax has increased 6% in that time statewide as well. But in fiscal year '08, on average, the... But in fiscal year '08, on average, the tax levy made up 59% of the budget, as opposed to our 63. And in fiscal year 15, 65% of the budget, as opposed to our 69. So there has been a 6% increase, but we have a greater reliance on property tax than generally what we see in the rest of the state. Oops, sorry. Next, I want to look at the changes in value that occurred this year, fiscal year 15 versus 15 here versus 14. So the total residential class went from 14.7 to 16.1 billion dollars, an increase of 9.5%. The commercial classes increased 15.8%. I'll give you a little more information about that if you'd like. The industrial classes, we have a very small industrial class, increased 17%, and the personal property, 3.5. A total taxable property increase of 10% year-over-year to nearly $18 billion. You add in the $2 billion of tax-exempt property, and this year we are a $20 billion community. We're number five in the state in terms of value.
Wow.
Right behind, although we could pass them this year, Nantucket.
Okay, then, I was getting, I was thinking, wow, we're really getting up there, but when you tell us we're behind Nantucket.
Yeah.
Seriously?
Seriously. The combined commercial, industrial, and personal property, and that's in there because tax classification deals with that combined class.
Okay, I've just got to ask you. So it's Boston, Cambridge, Nantucket, and what's the other one that's ahead of us?
Boston, Cambridge is ahead of us, Newton's ahead of us.
Oh, Newton, huh?
Right. Nantucket's ahead of us, or they were in '14. We'll see about '15. And then Brookline. The CIP means commercial, industrial, personal in the context of this tax classification discussion. And that's important because they all have the same tax rate, and all residential classes have the same tax rate. Next, I take a little bit more granular look at the changes. Single-family change, 6.5% based on the weighted mean or the average. So there's 4,578 single-family properties, and the average value is now $1.465 million versus the $1.375 prior, so 6.5%. Residential condominiums, based on this average calculation, increased 10.4%. Two and three families combined increased 9.2%. I do want to point out that that was not, within those combined groups, that was not a uniform change, as you'll see with some of the other material that we present in more, even more detail. Two families increased 12.4%, and three families increased 5.5%. So both increases, but at significantly different rates. Apartments really led the way this year, driven by increases in rent and decreases in capitalization rates that we use in our income capitalization formula. Commercial properties, 16.4% increase, driven by office and retail space and commercial condominiums. And again, this small group of industrial properties, primarily those are electric substations and the Verizon building on Marion Street. Next slide is in your material to sort of give you a longer view of the median assessed value of a single-family condominiums. It's color-coded here. So single-family's blue, the condominiums are brown, sort of that bottom, that lower line, you know, I've been running about, that condominium's there about 400,000, although now, as you can see, increased up a little bit more than it had in prior years. The green is two-family and red is three-family. So what you're seeing up here in fiscal year 15 is, you know, this clear upward trend in values. You know, there was a pretty steady leveling of values for many years prior to this year, with a small dip back in '08, I think driven by the recession. And then, next, I want to look at something that combines our analysis of value change and tax levy growth. Another factor important in determining what our entire tax levy is going to be, in addition to the 2.5% we can increase over our prior-year levy, we can increase the amount of new tax growth. So in single families, there, this is tax dollar growth based on the increase in value in single family of, not due to market changes, but due to physical changes in the property or changes in use. It's a formula that's part of Proposition 2.5 that the assessors submit to the Revenue Department every year, and they audit that and review that, and then come back and tell us if they approve their number, and they did approve this number, the commissioner approved this number. So it's $585,000 in new growth from single-family, all the way down through all the classes to a total of $2.1 million that'll be added to the levy. That is an increase of 1.2% of the prior-year levy. So 2.5% plus 1.2% increases your levy 3.7%, all right, from those two.
Just for everyone else to hear, that is not an unusual, what should I say, delta, is it?
It is not.
No.
You're correct.
I mean, typically, from year to year, we have a similar new-growth component.
Correct. This particular number, $2.1 million in approved levy growth, is 10% higher than fiscal year 14, which came in at $1.9 million, but below our all-time high of about $2.3 million.
Right.
That's correct. Where this levy growth has been averaging is between 1 and 1.5% of the prior-year levy. So this amount at 1.2 is in the range that we expect to see.
And what's the number that we use for our budget assumptions? I guess, Mr. Cronin?
2.7.
So this is higher than our budget assumption. That's good.
It is, higher. The next few slides, these bar graph slides, have been part of this presentation for a number of years, so you've seen them before, and I will show you what they mean. There, it's a comparison. This first one is the residential, history of residential percent value and percent of tax levy. So it shows the effect of tax classification. All right, the yellow bar is the residential levy percent, which you can see is around 83% to 84%, all right, versus the residential value percent, which has been hovering around 90. So that's that tax classification shift of about 7% that we've historically applied, the Selectmen have historically applied. This is the commercial side of it. So the green bar is the levy percent, which is hovering around 16% versus the commercial value share, which is hovering, you know, around almost 10. So, you know, between that almost 10 and a little bit more than 16, that's your 7% shift, all right? That's what tax classification does. All right. This next graph combines a few things. So it's not intended to be confusing, it's intended to be helpful, so we'll see. The yellow bar is, again, the percent residential, sorry, strike that, commercial value. So as you can see, you know, it's run a little bit more than 9%, pushing in prior fiscal year 14, almost 10%. It's now over 10%, just over 10%. The effect of the most recent revaluation, the fiscal year 15 revaluation, the overall effect in the value shift was 0.4% shifting from residential to commercial. So a broad commercial property is from just below 10% of the total taxable base in Brookline to 15, which is not on this graph, to just above 10% by 0.4% increase. The reason it's not, 15's not in this graph, because what we're also showing in these blue bars is the levy shift vote by the Board of Selectmen that has been, you know, about 6% to 7%, almost 7. The median shift is shown in the bottom-right box there. Median over this period, this 10-year period, it's been 6.73%. That's what you're voting to do effectively when you classify, is shift that much tax from residential to commercial, well within what's allowed, certainly. This slide has also been part of the presentation for a number of years, and it does a couple things, all right? Let's look at the x-axis, which is the CIP tax rate factor, and only shows the 1.7 factor up to the 1.75. The 1.75 CIP factor is the maximum for us, all right, actually for anybody, any community in the state. The minimum factor is 1, all right? So there's lots of numbers in between, but, you know, for purposes of demonstration and sort of to fit in where we've been, we're only showing these numbers, all right? 1.7 to 1.75. The bars are the classes of property, all right, and the y-axis is the percent change in real estate tax. So let's look at one, let's look at single-family, which is the blue, I believe, based on the bar to the right. So that's a single-family percent change at these different factors, all right? I am, that, something's not adding up there, I apologize. So as you shift to commercial, these bars, that blue bar should be significantly smaller, I apologize for that. I think this is, it's got a lot of data in it, this chart. Let's look at two-family, the yellow. I think it's a little bit easier to see, all right? So the yellow two-family chart says as you move from 1.70 to 1.75, the burden shifts down, and the reason for that is, is because it's shifting up the other way. It's shifting up on the commercial, the pink bars, all right? The one of note, I think I do have a data issue right there, and that one right there, all right? But, and I can fix that for you for next week. The one to note here is below the bar, and that's the three-family. Because those three-family values in town, three-family home values, went up, they didn't go down, all right, but they went up less than the average. Remember, the overall change in residential value was 10% overall, all right? Three-families' change was, average was 5.5%. So the effect is the taxes are shifted away from three families, and that's why it shows a decrease in taxes.
But I think one important thing to note is, if we increase the shift, the commercial goes up at a pretty good clip, whereas the single ones, the singles, twos, and threes go up very slightly.
That's a good observation, Selectmen Wyszynski. The reason for that is because you have a smaller base that's picking up the larger amount of the tax. That's a challenge of tax classification, indeed, all right? A percent change is a greater dollar number for an average commercial property, absolutely, because their values tend to be higher.
That, I think, is the thing we, as a board, need to be thinking about and balancing.
Right.
Okay. Another big factor is, we mentioned it just a few minutes ago, is the residential exemption. I do want to walk through this before we look at some more granular information about tax rates. So how do we calculate this residential exemption? We start with the total residential value, that, you know, that $16 billion up here, and the formula goes like this. You subtract it by the total residential parcels, 16,876, to get an average residential value. That's all residential properties, single families, apartments, condominiums, even that part of mixed-use property, say, properties apartment and some office or apartment and some retail, it's that part of the residential. So the average, 956, 785. And then what the Selectmen can do is take, vote for a percentage of that, which has historically been 20%, and that comes out to the amount of the residential exemption. So if that's how you vote next week, then the amount of the residential exemption will be this $191,000, and every eligible taxpayer receives the same exemption. It's not 20% of their value, it's 20% of the average residential value. And once that's determined, every eligible taxpayer gets a reduction of 191,357. The exception is, is this exemption cannot reduce your gross tax to less than 10%. So we do have cases, many cases, where a property owner, eligible property owner, will receive a partial residential exemption. That certainly happens.
That tends to be condos.
Tends to be condominiums, correct. So, you know, a $200,000 condominium, right, would not get the entire exemption. It would get $180,000 and not 191, all right? So that's how this works. The examples of how this translates, let's first look at what we've done in prior years. Fiscal year 14, the residential exemption was $1,995 for a full exemption, all right, and then 1312. So as you can see, based on fiscal years 11 through 14, the exemption has tended to increase every year, and that's because the values have increased, so 20% of the average residential value is a greater number. What these numbers up here are, that show this, if we had a single tax rate, no classification, no shifting, but did adopt a 20% residential exemption, the tax rate for everybody would be $11.62, and the residential exemption would be $2,222, all right? Because we do have classification, what we're going to look at, the 170, the 172, which is the same shift that we adopted in fiscal 14. So last year's shift was 1.72. If you did that again this year, the tax rate would be $10.67 for residential property that are eligible for this exemption, and the residential exemption would be $2,042, all right? And everyone who's eligible would receive that unless it dropped their tax below 10%. Then it would be adjusted. Okay? Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So this is the impact of these prior votes on the residential exemption. The green bar here is an average single-family tax bill, and then the orange bar is the amount of the residential exemption, all right? So without the exemption, it would be this higher number, and then with the exemption, it's the green number, all right? So that shows the $2,000, most recently roughly, $2,000, subtracted from the total tax. That's for a single family. This is for a condominium, same scenario. So you've got your average tax, that's the exemption component, and then, you know, below that is the net tax component. So as you can see, as Selectmen Wyszynski just mentioned, for the condominiums, because the values tend to be lower on average, the impact of the residential exemption is, on a percentage basis, far greater. Now, these charts are, you know, got a little bit more information on them. I'll walk through it with you. These are in Tab 3 as slides, but also in Tab 2, you have some worksheets related to these in even more detail, all right? But I'm going to walk you through a couple of these so you'll get a feel for how they work, all right? This is a single-family on the top and then two-family on the bottom. So the single-family is the red bar, and the two-family is the green bar. And this is with the residential exemption. Now, this is the impact of various classification choices. So this is a median, median single-family value, all right, after the residential exemption's been applied, the 191,000 is 1,000,002,243. So that's after the residential exemption. This little box here tells me to tell you that 85% of the single families have the residential exemption, all right? Not all, not 100, 85. That, you know, 85 out of 100 people have come forward and say, "I live there, and I want to apply for the residential exemption." Of note, interestingly, last year this was 87%. So, and actually, all of them have gone down about 2% in each group. This number here is the tax last year on effectively that same property, all right? That median, single-family, home tax bill. Well, last year was $10,694. And again, remember, the single-family increased this year on average about 6.5%, not the 10% that the entire class was. 10% that the entire class went up. So the taxes have been shifted away effectively from single families. So at, let me move over to 1.72. So we're looking at a column, 1.72. The tax change at 1.72 this year would be $4 increase, or 0%, all right? At the same classification. And the reason for that is, not because single-family home values have declined, they've increased at a rate less than the overall tax base. Same thing happened with three families, as we'll see, all right? Next, we have two families. 70% of the two families have the residential exemption, all right? Now, if you live in a two-family, you receive a residential exemption even though you occupy just one of the two units. You're still qualified, all right? Even though you have income coming in potentially from that second unit, you're still qualified. So last year, this property, the representative property, the tax bill was $9,785. This year, at the 1.72 factor that we're going to pick as a way to demonstrate this graph, there's actually a $579 increase in tax, or 5.9%. And again, it's because the two families, two families went up more in value, all right? The prices went up more. There's still, we lost, I believe, last year, we lost, I think, 24 two-families to condo converted. So that market tends to get pushed by that dynamic, all right? The two families, residential exemption, 70% of those, 70% of the two families have the residential exemption. Last year, that was 72%, all right? So again, there's more detail in your Tab 2, Sheet A, about those two groups. Questions there? Let's look at the next two groups, which are just grouped together. Condominium, residential condominium, all right? Residential condominiums, there are 9,950, 9,950 residential condominiums. 60% have the residential exemption. Last year, 62%.
Is this, have you been trying to find the people?
The audit.
Who are claiming the residential exemption and shouldn't be? Is that, 2% seems like a big change.
The annual audit has removed the residential exemption from a certain number of prior recipients of the, it's an annual audit. But I think, and that's produced some of this change. But also, I think there's condominiums being purchased in Brookline for non-owner occupancy at a greater rate than there used to be. The rental market may have something to do with that, a strong rental market, all right? So that tax bill last year, this is again, after the residential exemption, $3,097. At the 1.72, would increase $189, or 6.1%. Let's look at the three-family, the other sort of, the other property in this group. 46% of three families have the residential exemption. Last year, 49%, all right? The tax bill with the benefit of the residential exemption, $11,780 last year. This year, at the 1.72, shows a decrease of $210, or 1.8%. And again, the decrease is due to the fact that the three-family market did not increase, or the assessments did not increase as much as the other classes. Questions there? I can tell you, you know, I'm happy to answer your questions throughout the week if necessary. But a quick examination of these properties told me some things that explained, I think, why this market didn't increase as much. And I could tell you that the average age of these three-family homes is 108 years. So that's, you know, part of the older housing stock in the community. And I think that's one of the reasons you didn't see the 10% increase, but more like a 5% increase.
But wouldn't you, wouldn't twos have a similar characteristic, being old?
Perhaps, but not quite. There's, the three-family housing stock is primarily stacked, the three-deckers, we will call them, at a greater percent of the total than the two-family stack. You still have a lot of side-by-side two-families in town, duplexes, so to speak. Different marketplaces, their conversion rates are different, their, you know, pricing is a little different, so. That's one of the things that were very noticeable. You know, you had the 10% increase in value, but you had 12% increase in two-families and only 5% increase in three-families. You know, this is dramatically different, yeah. All right, next, apartment and commercials. We've lumped those two together for presentation. Now, this is, these are numbers here are without the residential exemption. And we present them here, and that's why they're combined, not that they have the same tax rate. In fact, apartments receive the residential tax rate and commercial receives the commercial tax rate. 14% of apartment buildings, this would be four units or more, all right, up to 500 units, 14%. So you can live in your own apartment building and receive the residential exemption, for, you know, one residential exemption. 14% have the residential exemption down 1% from last year. The tax bill on the average apartment building last year, $21,726. At the 1.72, that increases that amount right there, $2,567, or 11.8%, driven by the increase in value of 17% of this class of property, all right? The commercial class tax bill last year, $22,000 for the representative property, the median commercial property. This year, at the 1.72, $1,876 increase, 8.7%. And again, that information is presented in a little more detail even in that Tab 2 for you, but this is, you know, the real gist of it. So what we've done is presented 1.7, 1.71, 1.72, 1.73, 1.74, 1.75, all right? Questions there? Next, there's tax relief programs, as you know, that the assessors administer. This is a summary, in addition to the residential exemption. This is a summary of the prior fiscal year 14. The fiscal year 15 period to apply is still open, and it will be open until the end of March 2015. So if anyone listening or watching tonight thinks they might be eligible for one of these exemptions, please do give us a call, all right?
Didn't we just, we changed one of them within the last year or two to raise the income limits?
We did, thank you, Selectman Wyschynski. We were able to come before your board and get some changes that we hope would benefit the taxpayer by making more taxpayers eligible. We increased the income limits for several of these exemptions. And we actually went to town meeting. There was a petitioner who filed a warrant article that went through the process into town meeting that also increased the income limits on one of the exemptions. So the, I think the deferral was one that we recently increased, and the senior work-off abatement was one that you recently increased. The deferral went before town meeting, all right? But as you can see, our numbers are still relatively low. And I know that because I can look at other communities and see what their numbers are. And our numbers are lower than other communities. That's something that the Council on Aging and the Board of Assessors have looked at for a number of years now. We're going to, you know, continue to take steps to promote these programs. This month, we're going to be sending out a mailer to seniors all across town with information about these exemptions, whether we think they might qualify or not, for, at least give them an opportunity to look at it, to see it. So we now know through an analysis of the census data and matching that up with the property tax file, you know, where our seniors live. So we're going to send that out this year, this month, in fact.
Is it trending down as well, or is it just lower as an absolute number? So was it last year, 160 across all classes?
It is trending down, Selectman Franco. There's a couple of areas that's happening, starting right there with our veterans. This isn't any veteran, this is a war-disabled veteran. And there's categories, as you can see, A through F. You know, we don't have as many of those in Brookline. So that's definitely trending down. Visually impaired is trending up. The 41Cs are stable. This is a unique surviving spouse of a police or fire, Brookline Police or Fire. This, a tax deferral is up a couple. That's the one we just changed, the income limit's $55,000 there now. The senior work-off, the Board of Selectmen have worked with us to implement that program and increase the numbers. This, in fact, for fiscal year 15, you've approved up to 30 participants in that program. So that's $1,000, or up to $1,000 in exchange for 125 hours of volunteer service work. So overall, we have 153 taxpayers for almost $200,000 in tax relief. You know, we'd like to see that number higher if it should be, right? That's a summary of the material that we have. So if I can answer any questions about any of the slides or any of the other material in your package, or the assessors, Rashid can answer anything, please. Let us try.
Questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
All the way back on Slide 3. But I will summarize it for you, and you're going to go back for me.
If it's okay, I will, yes.
One of the things I was struck by is the personal property category.
This one then, or the different one?
A different one, Slide 4, excuse me.
Okay.
Personal property increased by only 3.5% is compared to double-digit increases elsewhere.
Yes.
Save residential. I'm wondering if, and correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is that personal property is mostly equipment, so the equipment inside the Verizon station on Marion Street.
Correct.
Is that increase cyclical? So do you see every 20 or 25 years when there's equipment renewal go in? Does it increase, or is this an unusually low?
This is lower than it's been. You're right. Personal property taxpayers, as you see in Tab 1, I have a list of our highest personal property taxpayers. And they are Boston Gas, N-Star Electric, you know, Verizon New England, and Comcast, all right? Verizon New England is actually declining in value. And the reason is, the rest have increased. Comcast has increased, Boston Gas has increased, N-Star Electric has increased. They tend to replace their infrastructure. Verizon New England is not replacing their infrastructure because they're a landline phone business. This isn't Verizon Wireless, this is Verizon landline. So they're actually decreasing their infrastructure, particularly their drops or service lines to residential and commercial customers. There's a trend away from landline phones. And so we're seeing an impact of that in local property tax, not only in Brookline, but statewide, by, you know, a magnitude of 10 to 20% decline in that one account.
Well, the funny thing is, I observed another thing in the same slide, which I probably wouldn't have brought up, but since we are having this conversation, I was curious, because my understanding was that the largest supplier of cable services was Comcast, but they have a lower value than RCN, which I guess is the second largest provider.
I failed to mention RCN, that's right. So RCN is what we label as a telephony company. They're bundled servers, not unlike Comcast. So phone, cable, and internet, all right? Comcast does provide those services, but they're still primarily a cable and internet company, not primarily a phone company.
So it's the phone component.
RCN's infrastructure is almost 20 million, I think, versus Comcast's 10.
Yeah.
Right.
It was striking because it was double. That's part of why I was curious.
I expect Comcast to increase over the next several years, all right?
So is that a function of how much, how much the two companies have invested in their infrastructure in TAM?
Yes, directly.
So even though Comcast is, has many more customers, they have invested in Brookline?
Less.
Much less.
On a net basis, Neil. And the reason for that is they're still using the infrastructure that was in place when they acquired that company. They didn't, they didn't come in and install brand-new infrastructure. It's aging infrastructure. That's why I expect it to be upgraded.
At some point, yes.
As we go forward. It's older.
And my recollection is there were some decisions out of the Appellate Tax Board not too long ago about the taxing of telephone poles, or poles on the street. Is that, can you just sort of update?
Sure, I certainly can. And thank you for remembering that, Selectman Franco. Up until fiscal year 10, poles and wires over public ways were exempt from taxation, even if they were owned by a taxable entity such as Verizon New England. The city of Boston and the city of Houston challenged that at the Appellate Tax Board, who ruled, actually in fiscal year 9, that poles and wires of a public way should be taxable. That was overturned on appeal, actually, at the Supreme Judicial Court. So the legislature changed the law. So that the law now reads that there's no exemption for poles and wires on public ways, and that started in fiscal year 10. We benefited from that by a dramatic increase in assessed value of Verizon New England. Since that time, it steadily declined.
Because they've stopped.
Even with, you know, that bump, those poles and wires over public ways have become less and less.
Well, this is a public hearing, and so, just so everyone understands, this board can vote, and has every year I've been on it, to raise the tax 2.5% from the prior year as net levy plus new growth. And then we will vote on whether and how much to do the residential exemption, which we have always done in my experience, and also the shifting to the commercial. So this is, in addition to whatever override we put on the ballot, your taxes would, if you're in a higher-priced property, go up, just due to our actions here. If you're in a lower-priced property, it probably doesn't have as much effect on you.
Well, it depends on how, the rate of increase of your assessed value.
Yeah.
Whether your taxes go up, and then within the classes, the classification will affect it.
So we would be happy to hear from any of you if you want to tell us what you think we should do on the tax rate, or on the residential exemption, or the shift to commercial properties. Is there anyone who, I see that some of the Chamber of Commerce folks are here. Did you want to comment on the shift, or? Okay, you don't, you don't have to.
You don't have to.
Just wanted to give you the opportunity. Okay. Well, we don't usually, we don't vote on this. Usually, the night we hear it, we'll vote on it next week and perhaps have some further discussion. Oh.
Can we ask questions?
Yeah.
So I just have one question.
Yeah, you just have to say your name again.
Sorry, Marianne Obriga. So if I understood correctly, and maybe I didn't, you're voting for the, or you're considering voting for the 172% ratio?
Well, that's, we haven't decided that yet. We can go up to 1.75, which for many years we did, but the last few years, due to what we perceived as, I'll say, kind of a fragility in our commercial areas, we did a little less than 1.75. So I think the last year, we were at 1.72, Gary? Or somewhere right around there?
Fiscal year 14, excuse me. Fiscal year 14, 1.72.
Yeah.
Two prior years, 13 and 12, 1.73.
Yeah. And then, so in this year, from what Mr. McCabe was saying, the commercial values went up. So they're already going to get a hit from that.
At a higher rate than other classes.
At a higher rate than other classes. So they're already going to be experiencing some tax increases. So I would... So I would, you know, guess that we might not go to the 1.75, given those circumstances, that we might stick with 1.72 or something around that.
So at 1.72, the median single-family home would experience a $4 tax increase for the year?
A $4 tax increase?
Correct.
Yeah. So it's not bad. But if you have a higher price, if your home is worth more than the median.
Yeah.
It rapidly goes up because you're, the low, under the way it works with the residential exemption, the lower-priced properties really benefit from that. So the condos, in particular, really benefit from that.
But in light of the overall conversation and the fact that we're about to talk about the override next, you're going to be not just going ahead directly with a 1.72, but seriously considering whether you need to bring it back to previous levels? 1.73 or higher?
We're going to collect the same amount of money regardless. It's who pays it.
Yeah, it's a zero-sum game.
But given that the voters have to approve the overall override, then whatever actions you could be taking to reduce their overall tax burden at an individual level.
Yeah, but bear in mind that if there's an override, the commercial properties have to pay more too.
Everybody has to pay more.
Every taxpayer will have the same impact. It will be based on the complicated system that you just saw. But whatever is added to the tax levy for the override will be equally shared 100, well, not equally. It will be shared 100% by every taxpayer. Nobody will not share.
Right. It shifts the, and remember, this is for this year, and the override would be for next year. And then we go through this whole thing again.
Right. Every year, at this time. Actually, it's quite unusual that these two, that we're having our tax classification discussion in effect as a tutorial before we go into a discussion about an override. In a lot of ways, I think it's probably a very good idea. Okay, go ahead.
George Strugus with the Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce. And we just wanted to put on record that we maintain, we support maintaining the same classification, the current classification for the commercial properties.
The 1.72.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, we'll see you next week.
We appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Yes, and I would say, this is probably one of the most complicated set of ideas and calculations that we, as the board, get every year and drives a very significant, important decision-making process. And I really appreciate how thoughtfully you have been able to break it down into all the categories so that we have a pretty good sense of the impact on each individual residential category and the commercial and industrial categories of whatever decisions we make with regard to taxation. It's really, really helpful, and I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Selectmen. And if I can just make everyone aware, if we didn't, that all the new assessments are on the assessor's website. So you could look at your new assessment.
Right, you can now see what the new valuations are, right.
Correct, thank you.
And just remember, just because your assessment went up doesn't necessarily mean your taxes are going up any more than anyone else's. So you have to look at the rate of increase compared to other properties. It's not a pure dollar thing.
We'd be happy to answer any questions. You know, if someone looks at it and it's not clear, we can call the assessors. Obviously, we'll explain it, you know, over the phone or in person. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Now, we're going to move on to the override. And we had, the override study committee recommended a number of either increases in fees or some cuts and things like that. And we wanted to specifically focus on those and what the impact would be and how people feel about some of those recommendations. And I'm going to let Mr. Kleckner kick it off here.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So you're right, this is one of a series of meetings that the board is systematically looking at the override study committee report. This evening, we are going to review the recommendations of the override study committee and many observations of their subcommittees about non-property tax revenue and also reductions in expenses for municipal departments and other municipal services. The whole point of the override study committee's exploration of this area was to reduce the amount of an override that would be required, regardless of whatever level. And I believe there's about, what, about 2.8 million, Sean? That is part of at least one series of recommendations of the override study committee to raise revenue that's non-property tax-related, so it could be fees, many of those areas in that receipt, local receipts category, and also reductions of municipal expenditures. And so we are going to go through a very brief presentation and, including some work from the superintendent in part of that, as well as the Recreation Department. And then we'll probably open up to further discussions. So I'm going to ask Sean Cronin, Deputy Town Administrator, to review that for you, beginning with the non-property tax revenue recommendations.
Okay. So if you recall, the recommendations of the override study committee on the revenue side said that you could generate $2.3 million from basically local receipts, even though technically some of them aren't. The biggest ones being parking meters, increase them a quarter an hour. The refuse fee, increase it from the current $200 a year to $50. Library, and then, I mean, those are the two major ones, and the next two are very minor. Library fines, $40,000, cemetery rates, $16,000. And then school childcare rates, which is significant and complicated. So I know Lisa Parity, our recreation director, is going to speak to that later. Then on the school side, Superintendent Lupini said, and he will speak to those items, which are basically increase in rent for some programs and institution of getting to market rate for other programs. But in total, $2.3 million. So why is that significant? Well, as Mel just said, their approach was, there was a total spending package of the time, at the time of $12.3 million with a estimated 1% collector bargaining increase for the schools. At 2%, that was $14.5 million. And they said, as a way to reduce the override, you can rely on $2.3 million in non-tax revenue. So stated another way, if you don't increase revenue by $2.3 million, non-tax revenue, you either need to increase the override by the amount you don't, or you need to reduce the spending package by the amount you don't. And what I did here at the bottom was, there's been, you know, the last few weeks, a number of iterations of updates to the quote-unquote "spending package." So as I mentioned, the OSC, if you read the report, had a number of $12.3 million. There was a whole bunch of assumptions, and then one of which was a 1% wage adjustment for the school department.
12.3 was not there.
Hold on, yeah, you don't see it.
Okay.
So it's 12.3, and then at 2%, it was 14.5 million. So one of the first presentations you saw after the report came out was by the superintendent. It said a couple of things were not included in the OSC's analysis. One was the 2% versus 1%, and one was a million dollars of one-time monies. And then we came back a week or two ago and updated you on a number of adjustments that we made. We increased our local aid estimate, we increased our local receipt estimate, we reduced our group health estimate. There's a couple of other things we did to basically assist the schools in making up the loss of that one-time revenue. And then this past week, at the town, or last week of the town-school partnership meeting, the town administrator recommended that the town-school partnership agreement continue to split enrollment growth 50-50, which means the town will absorb in its budget 50% of the growth in enrollment. So when you factor all those in, what you have now is an updated spending package of $12.9 million at 2% wage adjustment for the schools, with the $1 million of one-time money factored in there. So if you look at what that means in terms of the non-tax revenue, you have town receipts of 1.77, school receipts a half a million, and a town expenditure cut slash efficiencies of about $600,000. So if you were going to do an all-in package, you'd have an override of $10 million. And then over the next two fiscal years, meaning '17 and '18, you'd have to raise these non-tax revenues of $2.3 million. And then you just, you know, the next two are at the 90% and 65%. That's really been the focus of discussion over the last couple of weeks. So just looking at the 90 as an example, an override of $8.7 million, again, $2.3 million in non-tax revenues that would have to be raised by this board and the school committee over a two-year cycle in '17 and '18.
Question? Just, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I do think it's helpful, based on the presentation we've just seen, to confirm that the revenue estimates that we are using are basically including the new growth numbers that we know exist, but without allocating, I mean, obviously, it doesn't have anything to do with how the taxes are allocated, but the revenues that you're projecting include the new growth.
It includes going to the full levy limit, meaning a 2.5% increase. It means the full $2 million of new growth that Gary just spoke to. And that not only helps, well, it's not only in your base, it's in your number 15, but it's also in your base in '16, which actually was one of the factors that helped reduce that.
Okay, that's part of why I was asking, because I thought there might be a connection.
And speaking of new growth, over the next couple of years, I hope the assessor is here giving you rather even bigger numbers because of the red cap.
Well, I was going to say, we have some projects we hope will come.
And those are factored in these numbers, as I said.
Right.
I don't know, when I said to this group at the town-school meeting, whenever it was, that that's a very significant assumption in that.
And perhaps because we have an audience that's not just the usual suspects up here, why don't you just quickly name the projects that we have in the pipeline coming forward?
So the red cap site on Route 9, the estimates for that ballpark, about 3/4 of a million dollars of tax revenue, plus quarter of a million dollars of motel excise taxes.
Right.
Those are both, both of those are factored in in fiscal '16 and '17, because that's a construction cycle. And then to Brookline Place, we have somewhere between $1 and $2 million of new growth from that project. That's factored in, I believe, '17, '18, and '19. So those are two very significant projects that are factored into all of these figures.
Thank you.
All right, so just going to tick through each of these quickly. This really, you know, wasn't meant for much of a debate, just to refresh your memory about where we've been with some of these items. So parking meters, one quarter generates $850,000. Some recent history, back in 2007, which was prior to the '08 override, the Board of Selectmen increased the rates from 50 cents an hour to 75 cents an hour. And I should say, this isn't all the meters. We have about 2,500 meters in town. These are for the short-term parking, there's a number of long-term parking, they're different rate structures, but I'm talking about the vast majority here. And then in 2011, there was an increase from 75 cents to a dollar, and that generated another $750,000. And then, at the same time, this board and the Transportation Board authorized an increase in the hours in some of the meters, primarily commercial areas, busy commercial areas, from 8 to 6 to 8 to 8. That, the two hours of additional time, generated another $215,000 of revenue. And then a year ago, primarily because of the LMA area and the meter situation that we had down there where, you know, there wasn't, credit cards weren't accepted there, so, and these are long-term, 10 or 12-hour meters, and people had to keep throwing coins in there. We swapped out the meters, there was a cost associated with that, both one-time and ongoing. So this board increased those rates an additional 25 cents an hour, and that generated about $200,000. So you can see, there's certainly been a significant increase in revenue over the past half-decade or so from parking meters. And just put it into perspective, as we like to sometimes, whatever surrounding communities, where are they at? Boston's at a buck and a quarter, Cambridge is a dollar, and Newton's at 75 cents an hour.
So is that, is all of Boston at 1.25 an hour?
I, I'm not positive, but I believe so. We can certainly check on that. Okay, refuse fee, this one's a little bit more complicated. So the left-hand side of this shows that we're at about a 72% cost recovery rate. So we have a refuse fee, everybody in the room probably knows because you pay it. It's $200 a year. And that covers approximately 72% of the all-in cost of our solid waste program, recycling program. The white good pickup, the TV, all that stuff, the leaf removal, all that. Seven, that $200 times 13,200 participants covers 72%. You can see, the chart in the middle, we include this in our financial plan every year to show there's fluctuation, because the Board of Selectmen don't adjust this annually. So you see, at some point, it dropped down, and then in fiscal '08, it was increased because prior to the override of fiscal '09, as a way to stave off budget cuts in fiscal '08, that was increased from, I believe, $165 a year to the current $200 a year. And then since then, it's trended down to the approximately 72% now. So what the OSC recommended was to get to 90% cost recovery rate, which, if you look at the chart on the right, you can see that that gets you to $250 a year, and it generates about $663,000 for the town. Okay? But there's one complicating factor in this, and as you know, the Commissioner of Public Works has talked to you at a couple of points, and he's going to come back with a more thorough presentation, to talk about a modified pay-as-you-throw program, basically a tota and overflow bags. This was discussed with the override study committee. The next presentation's on municipal savings, this is actually part of the savings. Once it's fully implemented, there would be a savings of approximately $440,000 to the town. Those savings would be realized in fiscal '19, once all the upfront costs are paid off. We're basically leasing, we would be leasing if approved by the board. New trash trucks that have sidearm loaders to pick up the barrels would be leasing the totas. And part of this is the big bellies that you see throughout the commercial areas now. It's all kind of played a role in it. So there's virtually no savings for the first couple of years. And then, because of efficiencies with the program, a couple of vacant sanitation positions would be able to be eliminated. So you generate savings at that point. And then, once all the lease payments are gone in fiscal '19, you generate that $440,000. So why is that important? Well, as I just said, that the override study committee said, getting to 90% cost recovery would get you that $663,000. However, when you factor in the $440,000 of savings by fiscal '19, going to $250 actually gets you extremely close to 100% cost recovery. It's 96%, which is something the town's never been at. I mean, we haven't been at 90 either, but, so the point being, the numbers used by the override study committee are accurate, but in a few years, the cost recovery level is already going to be higher because of reduced cost structure.
Yeah, if I could just add, you know, not unlike the last discussion we had about tax classification, there are a lot of things going on with refuse because we're looking at the program. And there's a lot of moving parts here. So we may have a way to achieve some of that revenue in different ways, and we're looking at that more carefully.
Yeah, as people keep pointing out to me, though, if it's on your tax bill, you can deduct it. If it's a fee, you can't deduct it. So I'm just wondering, what would be the 90% recovery if we do go to the modified pay-as-you-throw?
It would generate about $450,000, as opposed to the $660.
And there was actually, for the '94 override, there was actually a conscious decision to keep a portion of the refuse fee in the tax rate to take advantage of that federal subsidy in effect.
Yeah, you went from 100% cost recovery to what we'd call the traditional, you know, 80%. Looking over here, no, it's not at 80 each year, but it's been hovering around 80%. And that was why that $460,000 was added to that override in fiscal '95, and the tax fee, and the refuse fee was reduced. So that's certainly an option you have. But again, the override study committee said, you know, here's your expenditure plan. How do you finance that? Well, we think you finance that by an override, by some non-tax revenues, and some municipal cuts and efficiencies.
And the amount of money we get from recycling, from, you know, mixed paper, is baked into this calculation.
Yeah, we're actually paying for that.
It's not a good market right now.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's very market-sensitive.
That was my point, that we can anticipate that those costs are going to change over the next couple of years, as they have over the previous couple of years.
Yep. Yep. All right, onto a couple of some of the easier ones. So library fines, across the board, five percent increase for late fees.
Five cents, not five percent.
What did I say?
You said five percent.
Five cents.
It's fifty percent.
And twenty-five cents for late DVDs, and you see how it's broken out between children and adults. In total, forty thousand dollar increase in revenue. Cemetery rates, there's a whole host of these, and they basically recommended a ten percent increase across the board. That would generate sixteen thousand dollars. It's actually a more, in my opinion, the more significant issue with cemetery revenues and how they're allocated or not allocated, and split between non-expendable funds and the general fund, but, you know, that can be for a different discussion. But their recommendation is ten percent across the board increase. And Sewell recues, I'm actually gonna ask Lisa, she's still here, right? Lisa will speak to this one.
Well, we were gonna, I was gonna have people comment on...
Yeah, I just want, so that I don't...
Okay, don't, don't give us...
Butcher it?
Yeah. Okay, Lisa, don't give us your thoughts about this now, just, just run through the mechanics of it, and we will call you back up to get your thoughts about why you think it's a good or bad idea, as, as we get to that with various departments.
Okay, fair enough. The override study committee has recommended action to take a more rapidly, rapid increase to market, to the market fees for the Sewell childcare program. However, in FY fifteen, actually prior to this, we've been planning this for years in our business model, the rec department began a process to get to full cost recovery within three years, so by FY seventeen, with increases of twenty percent over the next three years, starting in FY fifteen this year, we will be at one hundred percent cost recovery, a total sixty percent increase. And again, I guess this is the, the piece where I'd defer to later on.
Well, I think, I think if I'm reading your slide correctly, you can go ahead and give us your thoughts on this, because it looks like you're already headed in that direction.
Yes, but I can wait on that as well, but just by saying that there are definitely some challenges in the delta between getting to market rate versus cost recovery. Cost recovery at one hundred percent is not market rate at the Sewell Early Childhood Center. And I think there are some, some issues that, that are up for discussion regarding what the cost recovery philosophy is, and the business model, that, the nonprofit business model that we use to determine those costs, that are very extensive, very detailed, that we have painstakingly done over the course of years, that play a major role in how we set those fees.
So you're saying that their, their recommendation to get to market rate would actually be, make this a profit-making venture?
Yeah, so on the next slide, you can see...
I know, I don't even know if we can do that. But, I mean, are there also, I mean, how, aren't some of the families who come to your program maybe people who don't have tons of money?
Well, so thirty-five percent of our families are, receive financial aid at the Sewell Early Childhood Center, and it is a ten-month school year program with a two-month vacation summer camp in two-week increments. And you're right, it's, it's been in town for fifty-plus years. We, we have about thirty-five to forty thousand dollars in financial aid that is given out each year to those families, and we service over ninety families at the Sewell Early Childhood Center.
Neil, did you have a question?
I did, but I forgot it, so...
Okay, so you might as well go ahead and finish, because I, so you're, you're saying, if I'm, if I'm reading correctly...
Right.
You're happy to go to cost recovery, you're, the market rate thing, you're perhaps not happy about?
Yeah, I mean, as you can see, in order for us to get to market rate, we would be looking at a hundred and fifty-nine percent increase, let's say, in our, in our current school year. And as, if you look more at the slides, we are actually getting to that hundred, closer to that hundred percent cost recovery, but the market value will, will just never be achieved under that, with, in that model. And, and I guess what I would say, though, is that, you know, while we have, you know, a nationally renowned Reggio Emilia slash Montessori program that has a great curriculum and wonderful teachers, our, our cost recovery is all-in. I mean, it is, we recover all of our direct costs associated with running that cost center, the Sewell Center. It is, it includes maintenance, it includes all of our utilities, and all the things that you can imagine are, are part of that cost recovery. So we feel like we're passing as much on to that consumer as we possibly can. Those families are, are having a difficult time with a twenty percent increase a year over the next three years, each year, and we feel that it would be devastating to some of the families to, to have to afford this kind of option.
Okay, and I share Selectman Washinsky's skepticism that we can do anything more than full cost recovery. I don't think legally we can.
What, do we know what the delta is between the market, the so-called market rate, and the full recovery rate? So if we were to adopt a, something different than what the override study committee recommends, we have to make the, we have to make that number up somewhere. Do we, do we know what that number is?
I don't know enough yet, we haven't calculated. The difference between the override study committee and full recovery?
Oh, it, I'm sorry. With, at market value or cost recovery?
Market, the difference between the market value and the cost recovery in aggregate.
So it was, it was four sixty-two, Sean, was it four...
Well, you don't have to answer right now, you know, but...
No, here's, the answer's right here.
Yeah.
So...
Sorry.
Two seventy-three is what they, is what the override study committee generated, and in sixteen, seventeen, you'll generate another about...
Sixty.
So we're talking...
Oh, sixteen and seventeen, no, I'm sorry, next year. So, yeah, per year, it'd be about sixty per year, yeah.
Hundred, so it's a hundred and fifty thousand less than the override study committee was recommending to us. Out of curiosity, do you imagine that the increase that was recommended by the override study committee would just simply shift your scholarship burden?
Well, I, you know, that's part of it, yeah.
Because then you're gonna have some folks who are paying more in order to subsidize the ones who can't afford it.
Right, and it is a program that we, we only take Brookline residents, it services, as I said, ninety Brookline families. So I guess that's the, that's sort of the question that we don't know the answer to, is, is just what our, our demand would be, what our market would be for families to be able to, to come there, how many we could actually count on in the following year if our, if our prices increased that dramatically, so. Yeah, and, and we do have a policy of, of, of financial aid for families, no matter what, in, in all rec programs, so it will be difficult.
Yeah, well, we will have to check with town council, too, because I seriously question us going into a for-profit type of operation on, in preschool activities. I know, it doesn't, doesn't sound right to me.
Thank you, I'm here for questions.
So one more slide just to finish up, and then ask Superintendent Lupina to talk about the school component. So there were some other...
Okay, I was gonna do the library stuff next.
Oh, all right.
I know that they were, some of them have to leave.
So there were some other areas explored by the override study committee, and this subcommittee dug deep, they were looking everywhere for revenue. Commercial permit parking program that you're familiar with, they looked at that, they didn't ultimately recommend it, but the subcommittee talked about that one. Talked about implementing a fee for temporary parking permits, those are for, you know, contractors or home care people who need to park in front of the house for more than two hours, they get a permit right now, those are free, so they was talking about that. Assessing convenience fee for online motor vehicle excise payments, right now, except for property taxes and parking tickets, it doesn't cost you an extra penny to pay online. It's actually something we're quite proud of, but they were, they were looking at motor vehicle excise, and that's about forty, fifty thousand dollars.
Why did they dismiss that one?
The full committee?
The, on, fees for motor vehicle, to me, that's kind of a discretionary thing, if you choose to do it online, you can pay a fee. What's wrong with that?
I can't answer to why the full committee didn't, but I can tell you that I personally told the subcommittee that we've, we began this program back in two thousand, two thousand and one, as a way to entice people to pay online, there's no convenience fee, you know.
But I think they've been enticed, I mean...
And once you start the fee, it's gonna go backwards, but that's certainly a policy decision that this board...
All right, but, but to be clear, what you're discussing here is a trade-off between additional costs to administer a paper-based fee system, as opposed to having people do it online.
Well, have we achieved that cost savings? Have we?
It certainly, I can't answer why the full committee didn't adopt it, but certainly something that can be discussed. In total, you're probably talking about if you wanna go all-in on, online convenience fees and start...
No, I'm not suggesting all-in, I'm probably just making a little segment.
Why would you discriminate, then? Why would you select one kind of payment for a fee as another, over another?
Well, I may be guilty of that, too, but... Increase the library trust fund payout, basically use that to pay for books and reduce the book budget. Community Preservation Act, which was a very long and thorough discussion by the override study committee that ultimately decided not to move forward with that for a host of reasons. This is one that Gary McCabe thought there was a brainchild...
It would be nice.
Yeah, enacted the legislature, which I wouldn't put money on, to implement a real estate transfer tax, which is, you know, common in other parts of the country, but, you know, we don't have it here in Massachusetts. And then one that is, I think, doable, is pursue additional pilot payments, you know, the board...
Payment in lieu of taxes.
Excuse me?
Payment in lieu of taxes.
Payment in lieu of taxes, yeah. Something that this board, prior boards, and the finance director has worked very hard on, BU being the, the prime example of that. So those are some of the other ones that, you know, were discussed by the committee, but the ones that you saw at the beginning of the presentations were the ones that the full committee recommended.
Okay, thank you. Well, I did, I was gonna take the library stuff next, and then, then we'll get to you, Dr. Lupina. But, so there are a number of increases specifically directed at the library for overdue library materials, and also a recommendation of reducing the library's budget for, for books. And they're, they're saying possibly using trust funds to mitigate the impact. The town doesn't control those trust funds, and we can't make that decision to do that, but I will, the chairman of the library trustees, Mr. Burstein, can address those issues.
Hi, I'm Michael Burstein, I'm the chair of the Board of Library Trustees. It's good to see you all again. I'm actually going to pass the, speaking to the library director in just a moment, but I wanted to just let you know how seriously the trustees have been taking the override study committee report, as, as well as one of my five-year-old daughters who insisted on coming to the meeting tonight, who loves the library. We were looking, we were taking some time to study the recommendations and figure out things that we could do to meet the town halfway in order to be able to help find revenue, but not do things that we, as the trustees, feel would not be appropriate for the library to take. We take this seriously enough that I just want to point out to you that a majority of the Board of Trustees are actually here tonight, in the audience, in order to support our position, including our entire executive board. The president of the Library Foundation is here as well, I think she may want to say a few words if possible. We have a commissioner from the Mass Library Board of Commissioners, who's a board member of the Friends, all these people, we have one former trustee who is still very interested, as well as the director of the library. So I'm gonna pass the baton to our new director, Sarah Slimon, and she's gonna explain to you what we've been talking about, and what we feel the library can do, and also what we feel the library shouldn't do. Thank you.
Good evening, Sarah Slimon, library director. Thank you for your time, and thank all of you in the audience who turned out to support the library tonight. This is a very important issue for the library. I'm here to address the proposed expenditure reductions recommended by the override study committee. The library is one of the most valued and valuable cultural institutions in the town of Brookline. While there have been nine specific recommendations made by the override study committee, only one revenue reduction has been recommended, a fifty thousand dollar cut to the library's book budget. The committee goes on to suggest that the library could make up for this money through expanded use of trust fund money. As you may know, the library is subject to annual certification by the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. Certification ensures that we're able to remain active members of the Minuteman Library Network, which Brookline taxpayers used to borrow one hundred and sixty-nine thousand five hundred and two items last year, including seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-five ebooks from the libraries in surrounding member towns. In order to remain certified, the library must not sustain cuts, pardon me, to its municipal appropriation. Fifty thousand dollars is a nine-point-seven percent cut to our municipally appropriated materials budget. The magnitude of this cut would trigger a process at the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, which would result in the town having to apply for a waiver in order to maintain our certification. Since no other departments in town have been recommended for direct expenditure reduction, the commissioners would view this as an unfair cut to the library. Augmentation of the library book budget through library trust funds would not, by definition, preserve our municipal appropriation. Barring our ability to justify why the library was the only town department to sustain cuts to their municipal appropriation, we would be in real danger of being decertified. The commissioners would not consider the addition of private money as an offset to the public money. The first municipal appropriation requirement was put into place in eighteen ninety. The current law reads, "A municipality must appropriate a figure of at least the average of the last three years' municipal appropriations to the library for operations increased by two-point-five percent in order to be certified for state aid to public libraries." And that's Mass General Law, Chapter Seventy-Eight, Section Nineteen A. Additionally, I ask that you remember that the trustees contribute very generously to the support and maintenance of the library, with almost two hundred thousand dollars given this fiscal year alone, to support programming materials, continuing education, and staff development, items we wouldn't be able to afford without their support. We also rely on the generous support of the Library Foundation and the Friends of the library to the tune of another hundred thousand dollars a year. The consequences of decertification would be devastating. We would no longer be allowed to borrow items from the forty-three libraries in the Minuteman Library Network. We would not be eligible for any state-issued grants, including but not limited to the Public Library Construction Grant, State Innovation Grants, and the Library Services and Technology Grant. We would also lose access to the communal collection of ebooks available through Minuteman. Lastly, we would not receive the eighty-four thousand sixty-one dollars that we receive annually in state aid. When combined, combined with the proposed reduction recommended by the override study committee, this would mean an actual cut in excess of a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. The library is sympathetic to the need to increase revenues in the town, and while we're not in the money-making business, we have implemented two new procedures to increase our revenue flow to the town. The first is that the trustees recently voted to increase our room rental and recital practice fees at all three locations, which we anticipate increasing annual revenue to the Town General Fund by seven-six hundred dollars. The library also contracts with a collection agency to recoup losses of fines and materials. The average recovery annually for the fifteen years we've been doing, using the service is thirty-six hundred dollars. We're changing the parameters for collection to lower our thresholds, which should double our intake, adding another thirty-six hundred dollars to the general fund. The total of eleven thousand two hundred dollars is a step in the right direction of the fifty thousand dollars the override study committee was looking for. In summary, it is important to remember the disastrous impact on library services to the thirty-four thousand one hundred and fifty-seven Brookline resident cardholders. A full sixty-two percent of the town population are library cardholders. The net financial impact of a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, the loss of network services, lack of access to a vast quantity of library materials, would all be terrible. Last but not least, a cut of this magnitude and its consequences would be a blow to Brookline's long and well-deserved reputation as a community which prioritizes its cultural institutions. The library is happy to help in any way we can, but we believe wholeheartedly that we can contribute meaningfully without risking so much. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
What was that formula, can you read that formula again?
Yeah, right.
It kinda flew by me.
Yes, I should know it by heart, how many times I've had to prepare the report for it. "The municipality must appropriate a figure of at least the average of the last three years' municipal appropriations increased by two-and-a-half percent."
Thank you. Carol Caro and Linda Carlisle, why don't you come over and get in position behind Carol?
Hi, I'm Carol Caro. I'm a resident of Brookline, town meeting member from Precinct Ten. I'm currently one of the nine commissioners on the Mass Board of Library Commissioners which decides on certification. I'm also the retired director of the Minuteman Library Network, so I'm familiar with all the things that Sarah talked about and the implications of this fifty thousand dollar cut. I can understand that the override committee, which may not be familiar with what a library has to go through to be certified in the state of Massachusetts, might think it was a good idea to take fifty thousand dollars and have the trustees make up for that in their book budget. But there are three criterias that are coming to play when a library is reviewed every year for certification. One is the number of hours they're open, and that is based on your population. Your book budget, which is also based on your population. And then the third, and most complicated, is the one that Sarah referred to, and that's the mass municipal appropiation, I mean, the municipal appropriation part. What that is, Sarah gave the thing about the three years, you have to have an average of the last three years plus two-and-a-half percent. But there's another thing that the commissioners look at very closely, and that's a municipality not cutting a library budget in greater percent than any other budget in town. Every year, we review waivers, applications, and this year, I know we decertified a library, and it is devastating for that community. They are going to have almost no library service even within the town, and the towns around them will not lend to them. That decision about lending to a decertified library is run through a library network. And my years at Minuteman, during that tenure, there were two different libraries that went through decertification, and the directors of all the other forty-two libraries voted not to lend to them. And the reason they did is that the library directors feel that this is one of the real reasons and one of the real ways that they can get a municipality to show their support and to support their library, and not to rely on outside sources. So I can tell you, as a commissioner who sits on that board and decides on certification, this is a very dangerous footstep you're taking. The other thing is Sarah alluded to.
We're not necessarily taking it.
No, but I mean, the override committee is suggesting. The other thing that is important that Sarah alluded to is if you are decertified, you are not eligible for a library construction grant. And I know that the town and the library is thinking about applying for grant money for Coolidge Corner Library, and that would not be available. And I think, Sarah, did you say the state aid is eighty-four thousand that Brookline gets in state library aid, which is different from state municipal aid? So all of those things would be, disappear with a cut from the library budget of fifty thousand dollars. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Carla.
Thank you. As many of you know, I'm president of the Brookline Library Foundation. I also served for six years on the Brookline Education Foundation, was a member of both the Fiscal Initiative Committee and the Fiscal Policy Review Committee, and both of those studies were cited in the override study committee's report, and I'm a town meeting member from Precinct Fourteen. So I have a deep commitment to Brookline, to its goals, its libraries, and I also understand municipal operations. The Library Foundation was founded fifteen years ago as a fundraising arm of the public libraries of Brookline, and since then, we have raised private funds for the extensive restoration of the main branch. We financed renovations of both Cotterham and at Coolidge, have provided funds for countless programs, furnishings, equipment, books, material, and new technologies. The foundation has supported the expansion of foreign language collections, primarily Chinese, Russian, and Hebrew, and the library is now expanding its offerings in Spanish and beginning programs in Farsi to better serve the Brookline community. Our continued support for expanded and innovative programs and materials helps Brookline remain one of the very best libraries in the Commonwealth. A few little fun facts about Brookline libraries. We're the fourth-most heavily-used library system in the state. We circulated more than one point, one and a quarter million items last year. The Coolidge Corner Branch is one of the five most heavily-used branch libraries in the entire state, and in two thousand thirteen, the library offered approximately nine hundred programs that were attended by over thirty thousand people in the town of Brookline. Plans are beginning to either renovate or replace Coolidge Corner Branch Library so that it can better fit and meet the needs of our community. So fundraising by the Brookline Library Foundation helps ensure that the public libraries of Brookline are the jewels of the community, used by every segment of the population, and that they remain in the forefront of the best library services and programs offered anywhere. In each of the past several fiscal years, through our fundraising efforts, the foundation has been able to contribute thirty thousand dollars annually for additional books and materials on top of what the town and the trustees authorize. In addition, we have spent, well, as part of that, we spend seventy thousand dollars a year from our private philanthropy efforts to enhance programs, materials, as well as the books for the library. In addition, we've dedicated funds to study the community's need for the Coolidge Corner Branch Library. These are on top of the funds authorized for an additional study by the town in fiscal fifteen. The override study committee recommends a reduction of fifty thousand dollars, or roughly ten percent, to the book budget, and suggests replacing it with other library resources. This would be in addition to the loss of twenty thousand dollars in the materials budget in FY-ten. As library director, Sarah Slimon stated in her remarks, this reduction would put Brookline's certification from the Mass Library Commission in jeopardy, and I'm going to kind of skip over that since Carol also reiterated it. But many of us on the board of the Brookline Library Foundation donate our time and our effort to raise money from the community to improve library programs, services, to enhance our collections, assist the town in improving our buildings inside and out. We receive checks in the amount of five dollars, ten dollars, and ten thousand dollars from residents who care deeply about maintaining this community's libraries. By decreasing the book budget, you will put at risk all of our fundraising efforts. In addition, and I speak for myself, as well as I believe many others on the board, that we would be unwilling to dedicate ourselves to raising funds to replace those reduced by the town, as well as it would jeopardize contributions from donors to the library if you support the reduction of the book budget. This would be a terrible shame, and I think would affect the library for many years to come. So the foundation asks you not to support the override study committee's recommendation with regard to the library book budget.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Slimon before we move on? No. Thank you very much, and we appreciate all of you coming. Okay, Dr. Lupini.
So, let's see. The rental rates at school buildings, including BEEP and the after-school programs, were one of the issues we hope you will address. And is there anything else?
Extended day.
Yeah.
Gym usage, those kinds of issues. So, thank you. Nice to be here. I'm substituting tonight for Mr. Rowe, who would normally handle these issues for you. And, right, what I've been asked.
Is in Italy, right?
Yes, he is.
Eating well.
Yes, he is. Thank you for pointing that out. So what I want to talk with you about is really basically on this chart, and the good news here is that we've implemented some pieces of the committee's recommendations in the FY-15 budget. As many of you will remember from our discussions about that FY-15 budget, we have actually put into place a usage fee, rental fee, call it what you will, around many of our partner organizations. That will be put into place starting in January. In addition to doing that, we've revamped the process that we use for the rental of space. We've standardized, centralized that rental of space, and that will go into place in January. We're in the process of putting that in place now, which we think will increase our collection of fees as well. So what you see here is what was in the budget in FY-14 in these areas, and the main area that you see cited was some rental that we do around our gyms and facility usage, and I'll come back to that later. The FY-15 budget included a usage fee for extended day. It included a usage fee for the staff children's center at the Baldwin Center, which is what you see under Baldwin Rent. It included some increase in terms of after-school gym and facilities usage that we believe would be generated as a result of our change in practice, our centralization of practice, and it included the music school, which also rents space from us and falls into that category of the partner organizations. So we actually projected in this year's budget, and we believe we will meet that increase of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in revenue collected.
Hundred and fifty, you mean?
Well, the increase is a hundred and twenty, from the thirty to one fifty.
Got it.
So, if you go out to the column that talks about the OSC proposal, they looked at these areas in a different way. They believed that there was some opportunity to nearly double the rentals that we put in place for extended day, as an example. We do not believe that, at this point, that that program, that partnership with our extended days warrants in any way any increase above the rates that we've set. I'll come back to the next one, but they recommend market rate for our early education programs, and I'll show you a slide next as to what the steps that we have taken around early education. And they recommend, again, this increase, almost double, in what we charge the staff children's center and what we would generate from the music school, which is actually folded into these other areas. We actually haven't implemented those, any of those. We believe that the numbers we're at this year, that we'd take some time into the future to make sure those were numbers that were real, those are numbers that were doable by those partner organizations, and that we could sustain them. So the good news here is that we are projecting some increases in the revenues that we collect. The bad news is, it's not what the override study committee has projected. And in early education, the main area here, they're comparing this to what they consider to be market rate. I mean, the comment that I want to make here is they're comparing these, our program, to private providers, and it's not the right comparison. We raised that over and over with them during the process. Our programs, which are terrific programs, among the best in the Commonwealth, serve about two-hundred-and-eighty-five students per year in locations that are largely rented at this point. And public school districts, as we tried to emphasize to them, are required to provide for the needs of students between age three and five who come to them with special needs, with IEP needs. Many districts do create programs like we've created where they have what's called in the terminology typically developing peers for those students to attend pre-K programs with. It provides a great educational experience for them. The research has shown it saves money later on when those students are between K and twelve, in that their needs, having been met to a greater extent from age three to five, many of those students have less needs in terms of the demands of those IEPs, less expenses later on. Good quality early education programs in public school systems save public school systems dollars later on, and this program has certainly done that over time. We also scholarship a growing number of students who cannot, who simply cannot access, whose families cannot access, quality early education through these private providers. And so our fees are near market rate. We actually have increased fees over the last number of years, and I won't get these right in terms of the order, by eleven percent, six percent, three percent, and three-and-a-half percent to bring them closer to those market rates. But it's not a private program. It is a public school program, meant to be accessed by people who can't afford it, meant to be accessed by students who have IEPs, so that we can meet their needs at these early ages and prepare them for K to twelve. So we will, we have projected an increase in this year's budget of three-point-five percent. We believe that's the appropriate number. We take a look at those private providers every year. It's why we did the eleven percent a number of years ago, because we'd fallen far enough behind those rates that we thought we could raise by that rate and be in the ballpark of those providers. We continue, as the override study committee pointed out, we continue to have waiting lists, and we have a quality program that people want to access for lots and lots of reasons. The other area mentioned on here is around the gyms.
Can I just ask you a question about the BEEP program?
Sure.
I mean, even the kids, the scholarship kids, who maybe aren't on, are not special needs kids, but might be coming from low-income families. Isn't there data showing that if a kid is coming out of a low-income situation, that they might need more services later on in school if they don't get some early intervention?
Yes, absolutely. And again, that's another of the key differences in a public school program. Our program is around meeting the needs of those kids and looking ahead at their experience in K through twelve, and that's not necessarily the purpose of a private provider. Yes. The gym usage, as you see on here, I mean, the main issue here is there were assumptions made about our ability to rent out gyms, and of course, as you know, we have an ongoing partnership with our recreation department around those gyms. So you have these slides, but I'll just show you here a few of the schools. So this is the Baker School, and this is the use of the gym at the Baker School. You'll see extended day is in there, and this may not be totally correct in terms of all of these periods of times, but it gives you the picture of the use of the gym. So here's a gym that's used by extended day during that period of time, five to six, it's available to them, and then used by recreation. So eighty percent of the usage of that gym is the recreation department. That's the partnership we have with them. I'm not sure whether the group was suggesting that we charge recreation rent, or whether we not make the space available to rec and rent it to someone else. I'm not sure. Right? But you can see, school by school, the amount of usage that the recreation department has versus the other periods of time that are available for rental certainly minimize any ability we have to generate revenue from those gyms. Thank you.
Okay. Can you, I have a lot of concerns about extended day and charging them rent, and I see that you are projecting that you're going to charge them some rent, not as much as the override study committee was suggesting. Do you want to comment on the extended day programs? And I hope there are some other people here who want to, okay. Why don't you line up over there if you want to talk about extended day?
So there are. We worked pretty closely with three or four of our partner organizations last year to try to put something in place, something that was doable, something that we would phase in over time. Originally, we were slated to put this fee into place at fifty percent of the original, of what the eventual charge would be, beginning at the beginning, starting at the beginning of the year. What we decided to do instead was the full charge at mid-year, so we could get up and running. And we did that in terms of extended day. We did that in terms of Brookline Music School. We did that in terms of Voices Boston, the PALS organization, and we did that in terms of the Brookline Staff Children's Center. And, you know, we've worked pretty closely with Peter, we've worked very closely in particular with Peter and the key people in those other organizations to try to make what, you're right, is a very difficult thing for us to do, and certainly our programs to pay, to be able to put this. our programs to, to pay, to, to, to be able to put this, this in place and, and be supportive of them as we, as we do that. So.
Well, I mean, I'll, and I'm speaking just for myself here. I'm not speaking for the rest of the board, but it's, it's, says to me, if you make things too expensive for extended day programs, that you're kind of indicating to parents, send your kid home to the empty house, you know, because you can't afford the, the quality after-school program.
So-
And, and similarly with the music school. I feel like music is, due to budget pressures, is, is not a thing we do super well within our existing curriculum.
I disagree with that.
Okay.
I disagree with that, respectfully. I disagree with that. Our, we have a great, we have a great program, we have a great program that's been improved pretty dramatically over the last number of years. You and I've had this conversation before-
I know. I will say-
And it's a, it's a terrific program, and I, and I-
I will say, though, I had a musician daughter, and Brookline Music School played a very important role in the-
I'm, I'm happy to set up some time for you with Kenny Cozel, with some of our teachers, so that you can see the quality of the program being offered today.
Yeah, but that's high school.
No, it's not. It's not just high school.
Kenny teaches at high school.
No, he is our K to 12 Performing Arts Director.
Oh, okay.
Okay? And, and I'll also say, along those lines, because it's a topic that we've been talking about here some tonight, we provide a program that is of quality and is affordable to everyone. And that's not always true of some of the other programs that are, that are offered. So we're as interested as everyone in making sure that there are quality programs to extend for students till 6 o'clock, that there are quality music instruction that we can offer. You know that space is tight with us in terms of after-school and during the day. You all, you all know that. And what we've tried to achieve here, and it was a balancing act, I'm sure Peter will agree with that, was to try to achieve something that works for, for both parties. I, I hope that we've been able to do that and that we're able to sustain that into the future.
Okay. I guess, I guess what I'm interested in knowing is the, what impact the, the proposed rents that, I mean, that you're anticipating for the, this, the current fiscal year, is that right? They're 15.
Yes.
So they're already paying some rent.
They are not till January.
Okay. And that, oh, so that's why it's double next year. It's because-
That's correct.
-it's only one half a year.
It's not, it's not an increase in the rate. It's merely implemented for the entire year.
Yeah. And you are not proposing to go to the OSC proposal?
We are not.
Okay. And I just wonder what the, the, the current rent, what is the impact on, on families?
Good evening. My name is Peter Villa, and I am the Chair of BDAC, the Brookline Extended Day Advisory Council. I'm also the parent of a fifth grader who's been in extended day since kindergarten. I'm also the Chair of the local Lawrence Extended Day. I can tell you that we prefer not to pay rent. I'd like to be clear about that.
[laughing]
But we have worked very closely with Dr. Lupini to try to find a middle ground. We do feel that the OSC's idea of getting closer to market rent is ludicrous and impossible. Having said that, the 47,500 that they're asking us to pay this year is 47,500 more than we're paying from the previous year. And it will be doubled next year because that'll be the full rate. Again, we'd prefer not to pay that. So we did not feel that we had a choice, though. We felt that it was all or nothing, or we would be told maybe our programs can't be there. So that is something I want stated, that we did not feel we had a choice in this matter. We offer very good, quality extended daycare for K through, in some schools, sixth grade. The waiting lists in almost every program is through the roof. The demand's there, but you can't monetize that. It's not a profit-making model. We're all eight independent nonprofits. Brookline Extended Day Advisory Council, BDAC, just happens to represent all eight. We don't make money. So. Is there anything else I want to say about that?
Can you just estimate for me, though?
Oh, the cost per family.
The cost per family.
Well, it's going to be at the $98,000 a year across the eight programs. I would assume about $1,000 a month per program. I think, I think it's roughly that ballpark. And if we serve about 100 families per program, I mean, it could be $80 a family, $100 a family over the course of the year. No, it's not that much money to a family, but maybe it is, because right now, our average five-day cost for a family is, for a student, one student, I should say, is about 500, can range to about 525 on the high end a month, I believe. 560 on the high end? So it ranges from 500 to 560 across the eight programs per month. And it's a 10-month year, so. It's not insignificant, but again, we have worked very well, and, but we, again, I want to say, we didn't think we had a choice in the matter.
Okay, okay.
So the approach that we've used-
Yes.
The approach that we've used is, is, is a, similar to one that's used in Newton in their model, similar. And it involves a, a charge for the, per student, but for the, for the number of students that the program's licensed for. So it isn't a matter of, it isn't like some of our other charges, that there's this room and you pay this amount per hour. It's, we take a look at the number of students that are, that the program's licensed for, and there's a, there's a charge per hour or per day, or whatever it may be, over an average month for, for that student. So we really worked hard on trying to figure out a way to do this that was implementable and, and that would, would be the, would, would cause the least amount of impact on the program, and still started to get at some of these issues that we knew we were dealing with last year.
Okay. Selectman Woszinski.
Question, maybe from Mel. Does this board, this Board of Selectmen have any authority, jurisdiction over these school committee, these school charges? So that's the school committee. So, so then, what, we're being presented with what the school committee is willing to do. Do we, we, and, and this whole thing is part of a overall financing package, so if, if we're going to be losing revenue here, we have to find a way to make that up. Do we have any strategies?
Well, I, I, I don't think we have them, you know, ready to-
Right, right, right.
-give us the slideshow.
Can I just say that I'm much more comfortable saying, what you've seen is what the school committee felt comfortable-
I understand, I understand.
I, I don't want to speak for the, I mean, we, we, we've looked at the recommendations. We've concluded, as Peter said, that, that, that recommendation around extended day and some of the others, that they're not implementable. We don't believe.
I understand, so-
Right. I don't want to speak for the school committee on, right, but I-
Okay.
I think there's a number of things, some of the other ones, too-
So, yeah, we're, we're out of balance, so we have to come up with a way of getting back in balance.
You know, part of the challenge is, you know, we, we can't anticipate what the board might feel about these, so we're, you know, getting the feedback, and then we'll come back with some strategies.
Well, I'll, I'll make a statement. There, there's a theme in some of these suggestions that troubles me. You know, we, we're seeing recommendations to raise the, the school center, the recommendations to raise B, recommendations to, in effect, raise the cost of extended day, but I think there is a valid public policy to have affordable daycare, and, and, and I'm worried about, you know, the, the cost of raising children, very high, and, and, and it's really, the, the impact, you know, folks who can qualify for, for financial aid, they're not affected, but it's, it's the folks in the middle who, who, who this-
It's another case of shifting burden.
Right. So, and I, and I understand, you know, the philosophy, you know, folks who use the services should pay for the services, but, you know, I, I think we have to think broader.
I, I would, I would second that and say the notion of applying a commercial model to public education, whether it's preschool or K through 12, is just simply outrageous. End of comment.
And I'll second that by saying, I'm not sure that the town should be charging, looking to market rates-
I know.
-as a, as a appropriate level for services.
Well, and, and as I said, I don't even think legally, trying to make profits on some of these, I, I agree with you, Selectmen DeWitt. If, if, even if we can do it, I don't think we should be doing it, so. But, so, but we are eventually going to have to deal with the question raised by Selectman Woszinski is, then, so we're not going to implement a number of the, the things that the override study committee has recommended.
If we're not.
Well, we're probably, I, I'm basing it on our comments here, and, and the fact that the school committee, who actually controls those rates, has already voted not to do that. So we're, we then are going to have to figure out, you know, okay, the, what, what the package is, because it's not going to include everything that the override study committee was recommending. But, but I don't think, either Mr. Klechner or Superintendent Lupini have those alternative-
Right, right, right.
-things tonight.
By my asking the question, it was more just highlighting the fact-
Right.
-that we need to have a balanced package.
Can I just say that, you know, I mean, next week's discussion is, I think, pertinent here, because I don't, there has not been a discussion, all the discussions that we've had to date have been around these fees, other fees, and what the override study committee was considering in terms of an override. I, I don't know what this looks like in a no-override scenario.
We will find out.
Right, right. So I think, I think, I think that's the caution I would draw.
I hope we will find out.
We, we agree, I think, I agree personally.
No, but I, we have to do those calculations, is all I'm saying.
I believe the committee agrees in terms of the public policy issues and, and, and these programs and the importance of those programs. That said, in a no-override scenario, I, I, I think, I think we, we sort of start over.
Right. I think a lot of bets are off in a no-override scenario.
Did, did you wish to speak?
Yes.
Yeah. Come on up and identify yourself.
Hi. My name is Connie Clausen, and I am the Parent Board Chair of the Driscoll Extended Day Program. And I do just want to make clear to the committee, when you take these fees and usages as a package, every extended day program runs slightly differently. I can't speak for all of them. I can only speak for ours. Ours has a very busy group of little people running about the school. So we pay, as a parent, I pay a set fee per month for childcare from 2:30 PM until 6:00 PM. I could pick up my daughter at four. I could pick her up at six. I pay the same rate. If she leaves extended day to go to a music lesson provided by Brookline Music School, she's being charged a double fee. Her fee for the Brookline Music School is going to go up because Brookline Music School is also paying a fee to use the space. Then she goes to basketball, and the fee for the gym is going up for Brookline rec, and the same child is bearing, and this is a hypothetical child. I don't have specific numbers. The same child is bearing two or three times the burden because they're being charged rent for the extended day space. They're being charged a fee to use the space for Brookline Music School. They're being charged a fee to use a Brookline rec activity, and possibly-
Yeah, I, I think the school committee has not voted to, to start charging the rec department-
Right.
-so far.
Right, exactly. But the potential, do you, I'm, all I'm saying is, if there's a club that's meeting in the school that is now going to pay an hourly usage fee, you know, we understand as parents that we need to bear some costs for the schools. I mean, these are our schools, and we love them, and we want them to continue to maintain their high quality. The question is, how do we, how do we bear that cost, and how do we divide it fairly and evenly?
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask Neil's question?
Sure.
Okay.
What was my question?
[laughing]
So there was-
Where's the money coming?
There was the point of this.
I remember what the question was. Andy.
So that's how you do it. For every dollar you don't generate in non-tax revenue means an increase in the override or a reduction in the expenditure package. That's the answer.
Yeah. We, we did know that, Sean.
Okay.
But thank you very much. It was good to remind us, and I think we all understand, what I said was, it's cost shifting, and maybe there are some places where we can do cost shifting, where it's more fair, and other places where it's not.
I'm not defending anything, or I'm just-
Yep, yep, yep.
It's math.
[laughing]
It's a rip. Okay.
Got it.
Now onto some more fun discussions. Recommended efficiency slash cuts on the town side. We already heard about the $50,000 reduction in the book budget that would be offset by an increase in the use of their endowment. They, I should say that this is a $560,000 total package that were recommended by the full committee. Couple slides after this, you'll see that there are a whole bunch of other things that they explored but didn't vote, wasn't approved by the full committee. So reduce the book budget by 50K, outsource town and school grounds maintenance. Right now, we have a, sort of a hybrid model, where some's done in-house, some's done contractually. This was reviewed five or six years ago, give or take. And the estimates that you see there were the estimates from five or six years ago. The board actually chose not to contract out at the time. Punchline here is, those numbers would obviously have to be refreshed. And again, this is a three-year expenditure package. It has to be financed over three years, so it's not like this would be part of the fiscal '16 budget. There's not enough time to even explore these, these options in this time. But to the point that Neil asked earlier, you know, if you don't increase the fees, or you don't take these cut reductions, they got to come from somewhere else, whether it's additional property taxes or more cuts somewhere else or whatever. The third one, we talked about in the revenue slide, was move to the modified pay-through program. So off the 560, 440 is here right now. So again, the, the mindset here is that over a couple-year period, the savings are realized, and then it's basically redirected to the school department as part of the expenditure package. So the municipal service, municipal services subcommittee, much like the revenue committee did, looked at a whole host of things, these which were not adopted by the full committee. And as the bullet up top notes, that most of these would require changes to exist of, existing collective bargaining agreements, so it's not something you could do next year anyway. So police department, in this, we've already started doing some of this, is instead of having parking control offices both cross kids and issue tickets, because if you do the math, there's actually a good two-plus hours that they're not issuing tickets. That means loss of revenue, so if you have dedicated crossing guards and dedicated parking control offices, there's more parking revenue. Modified police details for town-funded projects. I will say that that doesn't impact the operating budget. It does impact the capital budget, but it wouldn't impact the operating budget. DPW, the efficiency committee looked at this back in '08, '09, was to privatize fleet maintenance services, similar to the grounds maintenance item a minute ago. This is something that would have to be fully explored. Fire department, you know, this has been discussed, seems like every year for a long time. Reduce minimum manning from four per truck to three on all seven pieces of apparatus. Savings of about $3 million. That's contractual. Reduce manning from four to three on engine zola, of which there were five. Save you $2 million. That is not contractual. I'm sorry, that, that still is contractual. It's this third one that is not contractual. Right now, there's seven pieces in five stations around town. If you eliminate one company, that would save you $1.7 million. That is certainly the board's, at the board's discretion. Tearing emergency calls, you know, it's, you know, a longer-term study, and the thinking there was, do you really need a police cruiser, a fire truck, and an ambulance minimum to show up at every call? Library, if you thought the book budget was tough to hear, close the Putterham branch library. Save you about $300,000. And shift Sunday workers, as you know, the Sunday hours. Right now, they're paid on an overtime basis. If you change a contractually to not overtime, it saves you $50,000. IT.
Can I say, speaking for me, that I don't consider closing Putterham an option?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The library people didn't even address that one. It's like, seems so outlandish. Yeah, I don't, I, I mean, I, I, I think a lot of these, there's a good reason the whole committee didn't vote for them.
IT, increased training. Obviously, the end result would be increased efficiency by staff. Outsource, outsource town school help desk. That's something I believe you're going to hear about in this budget cycle. Clarify governance. That's related to the relationship of the CIO with the town administrator and the school superintendent. As you know, the CIO reports directly to both of those people. Health and Human Services, eliminate the contract with Brookline Mental Health Center. That's a $160,000 item. Eliminate the community health manager position. It's about a, that's half the price. The other half is paid for with a grant. other half is paid for with a grant. Eliminate local daycare inspectors, the thinking there being that the state inspects, we do more inspections than our local daycare inspections. So, that would save you $30,000, and then across-the-board cuts of, pick the percent. So, those were the areas that, again, they explored, and, you know, whether they're crazy or not crazy, they wanted to find out, look at pretty much everything, and that's what they came up with. Because a lot of the quote-unquote "easy" stuff, which wasn't easy, but was done as part of the efficiency committee, I mean, our budgets, the townside budgets for fiscals '09, '10, and '11 were pretty much dominated by recommendations from that, so a lot of those things add a little bit simpler to understand and easier to implement, have already been implemented. Last slide is, they did focus, there was a subcommittee looking at benefits. As you know, this is a $50 million item in a $250 million budget. It's grown well above the rate of inflation, it's the fastest-growing item in our budget. It's two primary items, it's health insurance for employees and pensions. Pensions is a state mandated and directed in terms of what the structure is program. Health insurance, it's a hybrid, there's state mandates that then localities have some flexibility in what you can and can't do, and then it depends on how you get structured in terms of bargaining, and a whole bunch of other things. So, these are very complicated to get accomplished, they're easy to calculate, but they're difficult to get accomplished. So, the first one is, you know, it sounds very simple, but I'm sure the town administrator would say otherwise, and it's to take our premium share, ours being, meaning the employee, me as an employee, from 83%, and, I'm sorry, me as an employee, I pay 17% of the premium, increase that. So, the town share goes down, each point saves the town $270,000. A lot of money.
Yeah, Sean, I'm going to just, sorry, I'm going to interrupt you, because these are really the long-shot things.
The long shot, but again, remember, this is a three-year plan, and you've already showed your disdain for some of the fees, some of the expenditures, so I just, this is a package, and it all comes down to basic math. How much do you want to spend, and how do you want to finance it?
Right.
So, you know, changing, or getting more people, employees, to shift from higher-paid plans to lower-paid plans saves you money. And then future OPEB costs, and you need a lot of state support for that. But those are budget busters, as you well know, and it's things that the town needs to seriously consider over the three years minimum of this plan.
Okay, I'm going to call on Commissioner Pappas Sturgeon, and whoever you've got with you, come on up, and Frank Caro, you come up too. Because I want to hear from you on, so there were a number of things specifically, like increasing the solid waste collection fee, they were recommending privatizing the town school grounds maintenance, and the pay-as-you-throw, which we've been talking about. But also, the commissioner and I had a discussion, and Frank might speak to this, about, I think it's, I think if we put a large override on the budget, and we don't have anything positive to offer people who don't have kids in the schools, that that might be a difficult sell, and we talked about a couple things, and maybe you have some information for us on that, that we, a few small, relatively small items, we might put on the override to benefit all the other residents of the town.
I assume you're referring to the snow fighting equipment?
Yes.
If what you're saying is, could I use some additional snow fighting equipment? Of course, the answer is yes. You'll never hear me say no. Could we use in particularly another sidewalk tractor, a new state-of-the-art sidewalk tractor, perhaps doing a better job clearing commercial areas and sidewalks that are public property? Sure, the answer is yes. I'll take whatever I can get, of course, to do that.
Did you have any sort of figure for us, and what something might cost?
A sidewalk tractor is about $140,000, and that comes equipped with various pieces of equipment in front of it, in terms of different types of plow blades, or snow throwers, and also, the trackers we now buy are equipped with onboard sanding units on the back for putting down sand and salt. So, about $140,000. If you recall, I came before you at the end of last winter to take advantage of a purchase of a similar piece of equipment that we were able to get at a bargain rate last year.
Let me just get Frank to make his comment on that, and then we'll go on to your other items.
Yes, I'm Frank Caro, and I should say that I think some of you are aware, the fact that I brought to the town last spring a concern about slippery sidewalks, particularly in the commercial areas.
But we should say for everybody that Frank is also co-chair with me of Brookline as an Age Friendly City, and you are...
Also a co-chair of the Brookline Community Aging Network, and within that organization, the chair of the Livable Community Advocacy Committee. And we have a great interest in making the town more livable, well, in the first instance for seniors, but really, the measures that are helpful to seniors are also helpful to people generally, and some of what we have been concerned with are pedestrian issues. And in that context, we have been very interested in sidewalk conditions, particularly in the winter, and particularly in the commercial areas. So, it's important that the sidewalks be safe for people, for older people, if they slip and fall on sidewalks, they can result in serious injuries. It's also really pathetic to hear about older people who feel trapped at home for days on end, because they feel the sidewalks are impassable, and that's, you know, that's their mode of transportation. Now, I'm happy to kind of report, really, because of your responsiveness to the issue that came forward last spring, that you authorized the town administrator Kleckner to establish a task force that's working, looking at ways of maintaining the sidewalks more effectively in the commercial areas, and I'm happy to be able to report that that committee is hard at work in coming up with lots of good ideas. And, you know, kind of one of the things that we've heard in that context is that the town's resources at this point are for combating snowstorms, is really very heavily weighted towards vehicles that keep the streets clean, and, you know, and having a little bit more investment on equipment that would be helpful to keep the sidewalks clean, particularly in the commercial areas, would be really welcome. So, you know, I think this idea of investing a little bit more in something that would help to maintain the sidewalks is something that, if that were included in the override package, that would help to assure the, you know, the many Brookline residents who do not immediately benefit from improvements in the schools, that would, you know, help to make it attractive to them.
Okay.
You know, kind of while I have the microphone, I can't help but saying a couple of other things. You know, kind of first of all, in the discussions about revenue possibilities, I didn't hear anything about the possibilities of generating more revenue for fines for those who do not maintain their sidewalks in a non-slippery condition. There is some feeling that the sentiment within the sidewalk task force, that some of the fines that are currently authorized by the bylaw are pretty modest, and that may be actually from people who calculated in dollar terms, it may be, may make sense for them to, well, risk an occasional fine, rather than hiring somebody to maintain their sidewalks. So, I think a change in that area would require a change in the bylaw, but looking down the line for ways of generating revenue, you know, and I see that Sean Cronin is leaving no stone uncovered in thinking about possibilities, and this is certainly a pebble that is worth considering. I, you know, they, well, you know...
Yeah, I think we've got to get back to the commissioner, but thank you very much. And I will say that I had a discussion with Ruth Andobek, the director of the Council on Aging, who was very supportive of this need for this sidewalk snow removal equipment as something that...
Just please note, it's my goal not to have to find anybody, I would rather not find anyone and have the sidewalks cleared.
I just want to point out that we spent the majority of tonight talking about the operating override, and there's the potential that a snow clearing equipment for sidewalk could not fit in the operating, it could go in the dead exclusion, so just to note for the viewing public that...
I don't know if it can, because the dead exclusion has to be...
Well, it can't be part of the dead exclusion, it would have to be a capital component, but it's capital item, in any case.
Right, we could, we can increase, we can...
Dead exclusion is only for the dead.
What we can do is make sure that our dead exclusion covers our known capital costs, freeing up other capacity, which is...
You would have to be bonding it to put in the dead exclusion, and we don't usually bond equipment like this.
The hour was late, I got confused, and opened a kettle of fish.
This isn't directly related to Commissioner Pappas Sturgeon, I just want to make a statement that, you know, we've heard a lot of what I consider unpleasant things tonight, but I'd just like to just caution us that if there's something in the package that the OSC has proposed that we don't like, there's going to have to be the trade-off, and we don't know yet what that trade-off is. So, I think we, if we're not going to accept something, we need to see that trade-off. And, you know, that said, I have the same kinds of concerns that you do, Selectman Daly, and that we all do about a lot of these things, and I have public policy concerns, et cetera.
Yeah.
So, but I just want to say that.
All right, Commissioner, back to you. Do you want to speak about the increased parking meter rates?
Not especially.
Okay. Did you want to speak about the solid waste collection fee?
That, you're going to hear a lot more about in a lot of detail very quickly, but just to reiterate some of the points that Sean had mentioned, a hybrid pay-as-you-throw system, if you see fit to adopt that, will result in an annual savings of about $440,000 going forward, and that's maintaining collection services in-house with automated equipment. We think it's a very good proposal moving forward, and moving us into the next era in solid waste collection in this town, gives us the opportunity, and I don't want to make a full presentation to you tonight, but it'll give us the opportunity to move off the plateau that we're currently now in, in terms of the amount of recycling that we do, and the amount of solid waste that we collect, and hopefully, we can start seeing increases in recycling and decreases in municipal solid waste.
I think we're ready, so you need to bring that one on.
So, we're going to talk about that in a few weeks.
Not tonight, not tonight, I mean, sometime soon.
Just a comment about the other two significant pieces of this, that is, the contracting out of fleet services, and the contracting out of both town and school parks maintenance. Both of those issues were evaluated back in 2008. The fleet maintenance piece was very inconclusive, because we received bids that really did not fit what we were really looking for, and we need to rewrite the specifications and do a better job at actually drilling down on exactly what we're looking for. Fleet maintenance contracting is very, very difficult in terms of maintaining the level of service that we now currently have with in-house services, so we need to be very careful. If we're going to go out and re-explore that again publicly, we need to be very careful how we put the specifications for that together. Similarly, the parks maintenance piece was done to great length back in 2008, and as Sean alluded to, those numbers ranged from, anywhere from $40,000 to $75,000 in savings. Those numbers are way out of date, a lot of things changed in six years in this business, and not only do we have to reevaluate the costs for contractual services, realizing that contractual service rates have gone up in six years, we've realized a lot of inefficiencies in-house in our parks operation in the last six years. So, the in-house costs are significantly different, and you're going to find, I think, when we do this again, and we will do it if you so choose, is that the costs of maintaining services in-house are going to be very, very competitive with outsourcing, probably a lot more competitive than they were six years ago because of efficiencies that we'd made in-house. So, just, that's just a couple of...
Well, also, I know that we take our people who do parks maintenance and put them on snow clearing around the schools and things when we have a snow emergency, or maybe they're driving plows or something. So, I mean, we have to also figure in something about suddenly not having those, if you go, it's not just a one-to-one calculation of outsourcing the parks maintenance, you also are losing the flexibility of turning those same employees to snow removal, or whatever you need at the time, right?
That's correct, and whenever we do these types of analyses, that we're talking about making personnel cuts, we always include an offsetting increase in contractual costs to make up the difference in things such as snow removal. We do a lot of cross-training in public works, and those are some of the costs that will be incurred.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Did Ms. Gallantine want to add anything? Okay, so Linda Shannon, why don't you come forward and give us your thoughts on raising the parking meter rate to $1.25 an hour?
Thank you, how did you know? I'm Selinda Shannon, the executive director at the Brookline Chamber of Commerce, and as you guys have in your packet, a letter that we submitted to the Transportation Board last month, and we also attended that meeting as well. And I would say that the chamber and the business community is not opposed to the increase in parking meter rates, however, we did present a number of suggestions about how we would like to see the parking system improve, if the parking meter rates are going to increase. And in the letter, as you can see, it outlines just a whole number of options in terms of consistency, meters being the same, all having the ability to take credit cards, maybe extending the hours to eight o'clock on all meters, possibly extending some areas in Brookline that are currently not metered to have metered parking. So, you know, I won't go through every point in the letter, but you guys can see the suggestions that we made, and hopefully, that will help increase some of the revenues, you know, while increasing the parking rates, which, again, the chamber's not opposed to, you know, obviously, we would, no one would like to see the rates increase, but we, you know, we know we have a deficit to fill there, so.
So, I'm kind of, yes, I'm kind of surprised, but...
Thank you for the constructive suggestions. No, that's very helpful.
I mean, because I have some concerns about increasing the rate to $1.25, which only Boston has now.
Right.
And we're not downtown Boston.
Right.
And, you know, how much does that drive people to say, you know, I'll just go out to Chestnut Hill and do my shopping? I mean, I have some concerns about it.
Yeah, yeah, well, and we do as well. You know, and I think for us, one of the things that I was having not to see on here was an increase in fines, you know, I think, you know, we get calls every month and emails every month from people, you know, having gotten a fine at the current rate of 25, and if that were to go up, you know, I think that would be a double whammy on people to have increased meter rates and increased fines, so if we can, you know, not have a double whammy, that would be a good thing. But, you know, we do face that difficulty already with the street and, you know, Route 9, the malls out there, people can just go there and, you know, and not pay any parking fees, but...
Well, I do totally agree with you that we have to be able to put the credit cards in everywhere, because it's really hard to keep that many quarters by you.
Yeah, indeed.
I have a question, which is, you said you went to the Transportation Board meeting where you did present these recommendations, did they suggest that they would be willing to act on any, all, some?
If I recall, we were going to, they were going to put together a working committee to look at some of these options, as well as look at some of what the other neighboring towns are doing as well.
I see, okay, good.
And we certainly are working with the Transportation Board. We're very aware of the chamber's concerns, and we spend a lot of time talking about parking meters.
Oh, yeah.
I guess the point is, is that, of course, you know, as you do some of these things, they will cut into the revenue, because they'll be on the cost side, whether we have to acquire new meters, or incur the cost of credit card transactions, which we've talked a little bit about. So, you know, these are things we're constantly looking at, and as I said before, we, you know, we get a little direction from you guys, or the override study committee, then we go back to work a little bit, and it's, hopefully, we'll... And it's, hopefully, we'll resolve all these things before you have to make a decision in mid-January.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Did, is Mr. Cronin waiting to, no? Okay. It is late, but if anyone wanted, we could take a few brief comments. A couple people wanted to comment on any of this. Yeah, come on up, identify yourself.
Actually, just in the form of a question. My name's Brian Bergstein. I live in Brookline Village. Like many of the people here, I'm a parent at the Pierce School as well. I was curious, actually, of Mr. Cronin's presentation. This top item seemed to be a non-starter. Or it came at a point where you were sort of not so sure.
Well, it's like, it took us a couple of years to get the unions to agree to go into this...
And do it unilaterally.
No, the point is, it's collective bargaining.
It's a collective bargaining.
Right, yeah. So, it's like not something you can count on. It's not something you can do in probably under, you know, four years.
If, if.
To put it another way, we have three-year contracts. So, you've got a delay factor to start with. Then you have to, collective bargaining, you have to go through negotiations in order to implement this. It just means you can't incorporate it into any budget calculation.
It just struck me as a figure, and I'm sure you probably know this even better than I do, having gone through collective bargaining. I work for what I consider to be an extremely generous employer. And yet, my contribution to my healthcare premiums is far higher than 17%. It's like 30 or 35, right?
Yes. I think that...
And so, I just think it's interesting that, you know, you see a figure that large, every one point means $270,000. What we're talking about, we're talking about, you know, the future of the schools, you know, the future of our town, the future of, you know, anyway, point taken. I just wanted to try to encourage you to think as broadly as possible, even if it is something that couldn't be done for three, four years, to not sort of reject it out of hand as being impossible.
No, no.
We're not.
I think it's something we've been thinking of. But, you know, the nature of collective bargaining is usually you have to give something to get something. So, you know, then your 270 is maybe not 270 because you've given away something else.
Understood. Thank you.
But it's not, it's not an easy thing. It's not a thing that we can really factor into this decision right now.
It's not like we raise the parking meters 25 cents and we get another $850,000. It doesn't work that way.
Right. Totally understood. Thank you for taking the question.
No, but you are absolutely right. It's definitely a very generous benefit. Anybody else? Okay, well, we thank you all.[1748.06]